Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, October 26, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. Public participation in this meeting is in person, or you can watch and view the meeting on Channel 4 live, or go to LHCaz.gov/tv. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dale Ray from Lakeview Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Havasu Pioneers, Tony Aide.
Good evening. Out of the book of Proverbs, in Chapter 20, verse 12, it says, "The hearing ear and the seeing eye, the Lord has made them both do not love sleep." Precious heavenly Father, I ask for an alertness through our leadership, through each and every one of us as we participate in the oversight of this beautiful city. I ask, Lord, that you would give us understanding, that we would be wise in all that we do. I ask, Lord, that we would remember to care for one another, in the words that we would speak to one another. Let them be edifying, I ask, in the precious name that is above all names. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, Tony, from Havasu Pioneers. If you want to share with the council what your organization is up to.
Thank you. We're working hard to do a great presentation for this year's 50th anniversary. To be a pioneer, you had to have moved here between 1963 and 1973. We're going to tell the history by doing several floats. I have about 300 people involved in participating in that, walking or being on the float or whatever it is. But I like to kind of laugh and say the London Bridge is our last of the floats because all these things happened first. So it's just, we're really excited about this, and we're honored to be presenting different activities and then joining for the brick dedication. That's pretty much what we're up to right now.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and thank you for your partnership on many of the events that we've had throughout this month of October commemorating our golden anniversary.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for being here.
It's an honor. I appreciate that.
Next on the agenda is our roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Wouldn't miss it.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is our call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. We do encourage you, if you are here for one of the items that are on the agenda, to wait until that agenda item and the public hearing at that time so we can have a two-way conversation. Otherwise, during Call to the Public, we'll just listen intently to your comments that you may have, but we can't have a two-way conversation. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means one minute is remaining, and red means that your three minutes is up. You don't have to sign up for Call to the Public, but we did have several citizens do so. So we'll start in the order that they signed up, and then we'll open it up to anyone else. So we'll start with Marty Gillespie. Hi, good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns. I'll give you a really brief summary of why I'm here. There is a significant amount of noise disturbance in live music. To Vista del Lago residents, there's 27 residential homes, and Mud Shark Brewery is built within feet of our backyard. They were, the board members went to city, to the city to ask, prior to them being built next to us, we were told that nothing was being built there. Three of our board members came, and we were denied any information on that building of that particular restaurant and brewery. They conduct their business bringing the following problems to our residential area. They have, we have high noise levels from dozens of customers talking loud and drinking in the patio adjacent to our homes. Weekend live band music is so loud that residents are constantly calling the police for the noise disturbance. When the police come, it's a low priority, of course, they do come, but then they lower the music, and then the police leave, and the music continues to be increased. There is an intrusion of privacy to our residents because they face the, some of the homes, and they, they can see all of our garage areas, and they can see our coming and going, what we bring in there, and what we, the boats, and all of the toys that are part of our community. They also made it plain to us that they are having plans to expand their patio area and further increase the disturbance to our area. In summary, I'd like to say that we would like to request the city to pass an ordinance to prohibit the use of amplified music within 500 feet of our residences, because it is truly and truly a disturbance. Some of our members are talking about selling. We have to disclose about the noise and the music. So that is my case, and I hope that you have some kind of, help us with a solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peggy Pollak.
Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Peggy Pollak. I live on Eldorado, right off McCulloch. I'm very concerned about the corner of McCulloch and Eldorado. I did talk to Mr. Clark in the City Department in January, and he said at that time he'd looked into it before, but there had been no accident. Since we talked in January, there's been three accidents, one incredibly serious. The corner is now like it is in Saratoga in a coma, and it has not been revisited or addressed. I would like the city to revisit the decision and hopefully put a faraway stop. I waited there for as many as eight minutes, and I'm retired. I can wait eight minutes, but the people behind me are trying to get to work. They're going to be late for work, and it's such a mishmash, we really need to look into it again. I'd appreciate it if it would be revisited. It's a very dangerous corner.
Yeah, thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Conrad Burdon.
Hi, my name is Conrad Burdon. That's C-O-N-R-A-D-B-E-R-D-O-N. My wife and I moved here from, thank you, you'd figure I'd know how to do this. My wife and I moved here from Colorado a little over six years ago, but more importantly of late, we've noticed a tremendous rise in speeders and red light runners. And I would like to know what the city is doing to attract more police officers, because they're just, pardon the expression, they're outgunned. I mean, there are so many people that are speeding. Just the other day, I was on 95, and there at Palaverde, a big truck came through honking his horn. It was, the light had just turned red. He didn't care, he just honked the horn and drove on through. Evidence, too, a few weeks ago, you'll recall, a Cadillac was coming down 95 and had a horrific accident there at London Bridge Road. Again, I don't know what the answer is, other than we need to ticket more people, we need to call people on the carpet for this, and the attraction of more police officers, I think, is just something that the city has to mandate. We really need more help, because we don't certainly have enough. Along those same lines, and I'll dovetail with the lady that just spoke, it is getting more dangerous. You all have driven around the city. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. We live off of London Bridge Road, just between Kirk and also Industrial. We have noticed lately, in fact, this morning at 5:30 a.m., a large, they don't make them any smaller, cement truck came by our home. And if, and if they're doing 35 miles an hour, I will bake each one of you a cake. And you might not want to eat it, but at any rate, big dump trucks, everything. The speeding that goes on, particularly between those two intersections, which is about a mile, a little over a mile, people are just speeding left and right. We don't get enough police coverage to ticket those people to do that. But I would certainly hope that all of you can sympathize with everybody in this room that is facing some of the same problems. At any rate, I look forward to hearing more about that, but thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I say, thank you for that information, and I will talk to my employees, because they're the ones probably speeding in front of you in that cement truck. Somebody's in trouble. I will reach out.
They're at least, they're at least now, they're free every day, every morning.
The next speaker is Christine Simmons. Good evening, and welcome.
Hello, everyone. Hello, nice to be here. This evening, you know, the kindness matters. People call me the kindness lady now, because I've passed out 3,000 cards, and you guys have continued passing them out. Thank you. But I'm really excited now to tell you about some businesses here in Havasu that are displaying the kindness cards. My George at Arizona Flags has them right there on display when you walk into his business. So does Home Out West. They believe in kindness matters. Body Essentials, which I love to get some TLC there, and our school board members, I went there and did a presentation, and two board members tapped me on the shoulder, how can we get these cards in our classrooms? So that was exciting. And I've connected with Ms. Kelly, who is in charge of the career at high school, and she is starting fire science that's going to be taught by our fire department. And I know there's a police explorer program, but there's no ROTC. So I have a shout out to our Marines and our vets here in this town. Can't we get an ROTC program at our high school? I think that would be a great thing to do. Another concern, oh, if, if you want to attend a school board meeting, they're the third Tuesday of the month. I'm going to be there. They start at 6 o'clock on Havasu Pie, so come and join me. Another concern, this should really wake you up. Maricopa County is now wanting to join our rural community. They're redistricting our Maricopa County Congressional District. So please call or email and let them know that you are not in favor of Maricopa joining our rural community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Scott McIntyre.
Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Scott McIntyre. I'm faculty at Arizona State University here in Lake Havasu. I have a PhD in psychology and teach and conduct research at ASU in Lake Havasu. I came here in 2012 at the opening of this location as a founding faculty member to start something great. In a few weeks, myself and some of my outstanding colleagues and student workers will likely be fired by ASU for refusing to be coerced into vaccinations that violate our bodily autonomy. ASU is refusing to provide accommodations, as guaranteed by the EEOC, in which we worked under since the beginning of the pandemic. As an expert in scientific research with human subjects, I have spent every single day in the classroom during these last nine years at ASU Havasu, teaching my students about science and the ethical treatment of humans. In the last 18 months, I have used the ethical and scientific issues around the pandemic to emphasize to my students the necessity of respecting bodily autonomy, even in a perceived emergency. Coercion is unethical. Psychology research and history have shown that the intense mental, emotional, and physical stress created by coercion can force unwilling compliance. When coerced, compliance should in no way be viewed as consensus. Unfortunately, our university has failed to protect their students, staff, or faculty from being coerced into medical treatments that violate their bodily autonomy. I am crushed to learn that the coercion has been successful. Some of my students have unwillingly submitted to vaccination only because they are being threatened with the loss of their income. Faculty and staff are agonizing over the choice to forfeit their cherished career to help educate our children or submit to an unwanted medical treatment. I am asking you to do something. You may feel there is nothing you can do. Those that have enacted this unethical process initially said they couldn't do anything, and look what they have done. Brainstorm, network, find a way to have an impact if you truly value liberty. There may be nothing of more significance that has or will ever occur in your life again. You do not want to look back on this period of time and regret doing nothing. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kristy Cunningham.
Good evening, and welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. My name's Kristy Cunningham. I'm product of Lake Havasu High School and master's degree from NAU in public administration. So this has been my home for a long time. I could have qualified as a pioneer. My concern today is operation of the helicopters out and landings and takeoffs outside of the airport boundaries. My schedule didn't quite entertain the schedule that this came up, but I saw no safety, in my opinion, for the helicopter sightseeing business at the island inn in September 21, September 2021. I sent in my email photos of how they were set up at the island inn. They were no longer allowed to be involved because of the ordinance that existed. So I wanted to send a big thank you to Councilmember Dolan and Lynn, that they decided to continue to observe and reevaluate the ordinance that's been in existence probably since 1978. I didn't quote all the dates and stuff, but, so the sightseeing tour and skydiving activities along the hospital, along with the hospital helipad, appear to have a lack of regard for community safety, in my opinion. The quiet skies in the cities of Sedona, Las Vegas, Hawaiian Island Cities, and Alaskan Cities are all pleading for sightseeing tours to stop. In the city of Sedona, they adopted an ordinance where these tours are no longer allowed to perform over the city, but they had issues with the ancient burial grounds and different types of issues with those. I happen to live by the hospital helipad. It's exempt from all of these things, but I'm wondering where all the birds went. I haven't seen a turkey vulture, or haven't heard my quails, or seen my coyotes, or just the roadrunner killing the pigeons, who have now decided, after whatever happened, and they released them to live at my house. So now I have a pigeon problem. But anyway, so we have pigeons. But the state and local parks have ordinances that address their airspaces, and I'm going to continue to look into that. I contacted the FAA because I really felt with the hospital helicopter pad, there were numerous issues, and I know they're exempt from all of this, but they have four enormous helicopters there now. And an unintended consequence that was a benefit with the sightseeing tour was that the hospital helicopters were no longer flying directly over my house on Willow. Basically, they take off and go straight down Willow. Now, there's a commercial path that I was advised about six years ago that they should have been following, but helicopter pilots have to police themselves. So it's all up to what they want to do. They really don't have an altitude, they don't have a flight path, and the FAA is a pilot organization and has no real interest in assisting communities and safeties or quiet skies. Oh, am I up?
Yes.
So anchor Havasu in the water, you can always come home. 2022, have a good day.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Lerner.
Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Back in the end of World War II, does everybody, everybody remember Nuremberg and the Nuremberg Trials? And what went on there? Well, in the end of World War II, the news media was arrested. They were tried, convicted, and executed. Do you know what they were executed for? For lying to the people. For lying to the people. That's all I have to say. You folks have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council at Call to the Public? Yeah, good evening. Yeah, please state your name for the record.
My name's Richard Hobday, audio technician moving the mic here. Good evening, chamber, Mayor, members of the council. Super excited to be here. This is my first council meeting. I had a couple questions, and I just wanted to come here tonight as a business owner, property manager. I know that the water rates are on the agenda for tonight. I didn't see a lot about the commercial section of it. To give you an idea, one of the properties that we manage is a commercial building here in town, and the sewer rates went from $156. As the cubic foot went down, the new rates were 605 and 842. Whereas the water, I thought, was almost too cheap, $92 and $132. So I know it's on the agenda for tonight, but something has to change. I'm not one to complain. I like to be a problem solver. I'm assuming that's why a lot of you took this position. You can take problems, fix them. We have a great community. It's a great place to grow up, live, do business. But this is something that affects everybody in town, whether it's restaurants, plastic production, building material production, anybody that uses water, this affects. Part of the frustration is looking for answers at the water department. As friendly as the people are at the counter, they didn't have a lot of answers. When asked for irrigation meters for swamp coolers, as that water doesn't go down the sewer, there was really no feedback. For this building in particular, 99% of the water use is for swamp coolers. So it's water that's not going into the sewer, but we're being charged for the sewer. Along with mandatory landscape features, we had a new commercial building that was just built in town, and per the city code, it has certain greenery or vegetation. Some frustration in it is, it was required, or it was told to us that automatic water irrigation was required. So when sewer rates are highest, it wouldn't really make sense to get an irrigation meter for that, but it's going to add to our water bill nonetheless. So as where I wanted cactus, or acatillos, or I went to school in Tucson, and they have a lot of natural vegetation. It didn't seem possible at our building. So I'm not sure if that's something that could be revisited if nothing can change with the water rates. Let me see here. Yeah, I think that's it. So thank you all, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council at Call to the Public? Yeah, please, you just make your way to the podium. And if you are here to talk about the water rates, we will have a public hearing at that time as well. We can talk back and forth, so.
I'm one of those guys here to talk about the water rate. I'm Mark McNabb from Sherlock Homes, which is a condo association. I did communicate with Mayor Carl and the rest of the council folks via email, and I also have talked, I believe, with Anthony a couple of times so far. Our condo association was under a commercial rate at the time. I did plead our case with the mayor and the council folks, and I was alerted by Anthony that our rate will be adjusted from commercial to multifamily, which we thank you for that. Our biggest problem, of course, is with that fixed rate of the 4867. That seems to be way outlandish for us, where we have 59 condo units, 85% of the time, they are not occupied. That's throughout the year. On average, our folks come in for three to maybe four months out of the year and have basically one or two people in them. We have no families that live at Sherlock Homes. So, you know, we're pleading with you to get us some more relief as far as the 4867. I know there was an article in the paper, and we're thankful that you guys are looking back into this, but obviously, it makes a huge impact on folks that typically don't vote in your elections. You know, we're paying taxes here, but we really don't have a voice. We're counting on your good graces to help us out. We love Lake Havasu. I think most of the folks that own condos here in Lake Havasu love it. That's the reason we come. But we count on you folks that are the decision makers to make good quality decisions based upon our usage. And if you look at our usage from condo to condo, we don't put a lot of water through our system. We don't use a lot of your sewer system. We have very minimal use when you look at our condos from each individual homeowner. So we're really at your mercy, and we're asking for it, and we hope that you can do a good job for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council this time?
Good evening, council. I'd just like to start and ask our almighty God to guide this panel on wise, just, and compassionate decisions.
Yes, sir. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, my name is Don Troutman. I'm a site manager for an out-of-state investor. And the water usage is also an issue for me, for my tenants. It's a very complicated issue. I did some homework since last city council meeting, and like me, like pal, we're at dangerous levels. Don't envy you for the decisions you're going to have to make doing this. However, no matter what side of the fence you're on, we're in a national Build Back Better campaign to build the country stronger for the working class. Sorry, not everybody's a millionaire. Most of my tenants are collecting social security, and we know that. Laying loads are not going to absorb this 4867 increase on each unit. It's going to go on the back of the people on fixed income and the workforce, people that are not homeowners, but have to rent until they become a homeowner. My boss isn't making a whole lot. He's a firm believer in keeping affordable housing, you know, for people that work in our hotels and everybody that's framing and laying concrete in this city. And it's hard for me to, with good compassion and morality, to tell my tenants that I'm going to bump them another 50 bucks. And some of these people that have HOAs and condos and got $10,000 water bills, you know, they're not millionaires either. And if something happens and they get a lien placed on their property because of this, then you can't sell your unit, the whole unit starts to collapse. So in closing, I'd just like to say, maybe the council should consider suspending these payments until this very complicated issue is more than even keel. Thank the panel for their time, and again, may God guide you in a just decision, compassionate, a little empathy instead of business all the time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during Call to the Public? All right, seeing that, we'll close the in-person call to the public. Ms. Williams, did you receive any written comments?
No comments for Call to the Public.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Item 6, our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Koch?
Motion.
Please.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7 is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is Announce Vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, and three alternate members. Board of Adjustment, one regular member and three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and they're also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Item 7.2 is our city managers' report. Good evening, Mr. Knudson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'd like to start this evening's city manager's report with a congratulations to our very own Ron Stuhlberg. He is retiring after a 23-year career with the city. He's working in the Public Works Department and specifically in our Waste Water Division. Ron was hired in our Waste Water Division as a maintenance tech on November 29th, 1998. In 2000, he was promoted to a maintenance specialist and was reclassified as a utility worker two, seven years later. And in 2018, he was promoted to field supervisor and then reclassified to a utility supervisor in just last year. He's done wonderful, wonderful work for the city in keeping the sewer system robust. Ron, I'd like to thank you for your dedication and service to Lake Havasu City. We wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors. And with one going out, we have one coming in. I'd like to congratulate Bobby Kimmelman. Bobby has accepted the full-time position as our HR Director, our Human Resources Director. Bobby was a peory as a human resource manager for approximately eight years, as well as she worked in HR for the city of Denton, Texas. She also served as the HR and Safety Director for an electric co-op in Florida for about six years. She has a bachelor's of science from Bowling Green State University in a public administration. She has a master's from the University of Cincinnati and a PhD from Walden University in public policy and public law. Also, she was recently inducted into the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame by the Unified Arizona Veterans for her service and sacrifice to our country, a very tremendous accomplishment. Bobby served seven years in the U.S. Army as a cryptographic signal interceptor Russian including service in the 3rd Armored Division in Germany. Welcome Bobby to the team and we're grateful for everything you're about to do for us. Just last Friday, we had five veterans who graduated from the Lake Havasu City Veterans Treatment Court. This was the program's 37th graduation, spearheaded by our Judge Mitch Kalali. And there's, and we have a total of 203 graduates since the inception nearly eight years ago. The recidivism rate is consistently under 10%, which is a phenomenal statistic. Mayor Sheehy, you presented proclamations to two distinguished Lake Havasu High School athletes that happened to be brothers. Gerald Jr. and Isaac Bolden were honored for their achievement of being recognized as the 2020-21 Scholar Athletes of the Year for the Phoenix Chapter of National Alliance of African-American Athletes. Athletes elected for this chapter's annual scholarly honor exhibited a commitment to high athletic and academic standards and respond with graduate, excuse me, respond with gratitude through kindness and within the communities. Congratulations to Jared Jr. and Isaac Bolden. You also provided a proclamation to Tim Sebold, reclaiming October 15th as Lake Havasu Outboard Championship Day to celebrate the return of the event conducted by the NGK Spark Plugs Formula One Powerboat Series. And a proclamation to Hospice of Havasu reclaiming the month of November as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month to encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of their life. Discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families and observe this month. And Councilmember David Lane, you spoke with the Mojave Community College Student Activities Council about leadership and civic engagement, and I'm told had quite a conversation. Reminder to be sure to join us on Thursday, October 28th at 4:00 p.m. at the stage underneath the Lennon Bridge for the traditional dedication ceremony. And don't forget on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. for the Lennon Bridge Days Parade in our downtown Lake Havasu City. Also on Thursday at 6:00 p.m., following the dedication of Lennon Bridge, stick around and join us for the 2021 Youth Talent Show taking place underneath the Lennon Bridge on the stage. You don't want to miss out on this Lennon Bridge Days tradition. Our Lake Havasu City's Parks and Recreation is hosting a brand-new event on Halloween. Join us from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Aquatic Center on Halloween night for an event we're calling Boobash. Trigger shooting games and bounce house will take place on the lawn of the Aquatic Center along with a swimming movie featuring Hotel Transylvania will be in the pool. This fun event is free to attend. We'll have candy and popcorn. Please have some not-so-scary fun and bring your bathing suit for a family-friendly evening, as always, but especially during this weekend. Please be vigilant with children, street closures, traffic signs, all the road safety measures that are important on Halloween night. And lastly, the COVID report, information that's provided by the Mojave County Public Health Department. This information is as of today, October 26th. There have been 184 new cases since my last report. And currently there are 125 active cases of COVID in Lake Havasu City. Of course, you can see the graphic on the screen showing some of the trends. And as always, a reminder to be smart, be diligent, and please, let's support one another. Mayor and council, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. 8.1 is Adopt Resolution Number 21-3536, approving a memorandum of understanding with the Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One for the CTE Wave Fire Service Program. Chief Palafis.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before you is a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Lake Havasu United School District Number One for their CTE Fire Service Program. This all started approximately about eight months ago. The fire department and school district were connected by networking with each other. We found out that in the fire service, we are struggling with recruitment, getting individuals to come from different areas to come to Lake Havasu due to multiple reasons. So obviously as a fire chief, I solve lots of problems, so we came up with a solution. Let's start homegrowing some of our individuals here at the high school. Let's help them with a career path to get into the fire service and why not better serve the community here. So Marsha Becker is here to represent Unified School District. We worked over eight months with her going through and planning out lesson plans and how this is going to work. We are very satisfied with the MOU. We created together through a partnership. And the Career Education Program is preparing high school students to apply academic, technical knowledge, and skills in a variety of settings within firefighter response. The course is designed with lessons in fire behavior, safety, building instructions, nutrition, wellness, the fire department equipment and tools, as well as history and the culture of the fire service, and especially the fire service here in Lake Havasu City. The Lake Havasu City Fire Department is going to coordinate all aspects of the program and provide instructors using off-duty fire department members and the use of our facility at Station Two training grounds. The Unified School District is going to provide funding for this program. They're going to provide counselors to promote the program. They're really budgeting and funding the entire program for us. So there's really no anticipated costs for the city to run this program. On October 9th, 2021, this was presented to the Unified School District Board and they fully supported this partnership. So we really appreciate them. The fire department is excited to be part of developing the next generation of paramedic firefighters here within the city. The partnership is a win-win for the students and for this community. If approved, we are going to start our application period November 1st through December 10th to apply for the program. Our pilot program is going to start January where we're going to apply, seniors are going to apply, and then we're going to open it up to potential juniors in the high school. So this is happening fairly quick. We have done a lot of planning. And I can't believe just the outcry of the public here to, you know, support this program. This is excellent and starting a new venture with the partnership with Unified School District. If you have any questions, Marsha's here.
So, Marsha. Yeah, thank you, Chief. Good evening, Marsha.
Good evening. I think Chief Palafis said it all. We have been working hard on this for the last eight months. And we had this program approved at the high school in 2019, and we haven't been able to find an instructor. We haven't been able to find the right fit. And so this partnership just makes complete sense. Who better than to instruct our students in this career, in this field, than the people that are out there on the path doing this every day? I really appreciate working with the chief over this past eight months. I know this is going to be a great program for our students. If we get students into CTE programs, some of you have heard my presentations, they graduated at a 97% rate. So we want to get them into these programs. We want them out in our community here in Lake Havasu City. We want to grow our own and hopefully this will be well-received and supported as well. If anybody has any questions, I.
Excellent. Do any members of the council have any questions for the chief or Ms. Becker? Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I'm really excited about this. I think this is one of the no-brainer ones we have on the agenda tonight. And I'm so excited for this partnership and to see it come together like this. I think it does great things for the school and I think it'll even maybe put a little, you know, a little information in there here about coming to work for the great city of Lake Havasu too. So I think this is absolutely phenomenal and thank you for all the work you put in on it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Campbell?
Motion?
You know, it's, let's open up the public hearing and then we'll bring it back to council. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tyler Zink, President of the Lake Havasu Professional Firefighters, just here tonight to show support for the CTE program. We believe in educating the young minds that are interested in the craft of professional firefighting and emergency services. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Would anyone else? Yes, sir, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Edward Buck. I'm a resident here. My wife and I have a condo at Xanadu. And I'm a retiree from the Alpina Public Schools, Alpina, Michigan. One of the programs that we started, I was the director of vocational career and technical education there for many, 43 and a half years. But one of the programs that we started while I was the director was public safety. It was one-third firefighting, one-third emergency medical, and one-third criminal justice. And it attracted students to enroll in this class and be introduced to each of these three professions and/or places to donate your time as a volunteer. I was also a volunteer firefighter for 43 and a half years in the EMT. But we found that many, many students took that class and became interested in following those careers. And it has really helped all of the city and the township departments, both legal, fire, and medical in recruiting people as well as having them go on to college to upgrade that skill. But the program at the high school level was a beautiful introduction to the career and it introduced a lot of people to it. So congratulations on doing it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that. Can I just address?
Please, yes.
So we do have a law and public safety program as well. It's full-time. And they are going to actually hopefully be right next to each other, working together at the high school. And we also feed into MCC. So success in this program is not just taking it at the high school level and incorporating the fire service station. It's also going to be moving them into the EMT and those programs, medical services programs at MCC, and then keeping them here, growing our own.
Yeah, fantastic. Would anyone else like to address the City Council during this public hearing? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Councilmember Lane?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, please.
Chief, can you tell me how many firefighters that we're using in the program of our own?
In our CTE program, how many are going to be involved in instructing? Approximately I have about 10 instructors that are going to run the program. The program's going to run for the entire school year, so we will run two sessions. And we're using, they will be off-duty and be taking care of the program. And the thing is, it's open to all our fire department members.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I was excited.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
This is good stuff. This is a win.
Exactly.
We need some wins.
Yes.
I'd love to motion to move to adopt Resolution Number 21-3536, approving a memorandum and understanding the Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One for the CTE/Wave Fire Service Program.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Right, thank you. Congratulations. All right, item 8.2, introduce ordinance number 21-1271 to amend the local amendments to the 2018 International Fire Code regarding automatic sprinkler systems for our occupancies. Division Chief Hartman, welcome.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Very good. This evening, I'm here to speak on the amendments to the International Fire Code. Back in June of this year, we adopted the 2018 International Code. As part of that adoption, we did adopt some amendments to that. One of the amendments was in regards to fire sprinklers, specifically fire sprinklers in single-family homes. Tonight, we're here to talk about an aspect of that in regards to single-family homes being sprinkled that existed on multifamily lots. We had an individual that owned a multifamily lot that was building a single-family home that brought up the question to us, why am I sprinkling this? Why is that required on a multifamily lot, which we felt was an excellent question? So we went back and we examined and we met with the building department. We discussed this. And we realized that we were looking at it from a zoning perspective as opposed to an occupancy perspective. The fire code actually looks at occupancies as opposed to zoning. When we looked at that, we realized that the occupant load for these cases are single-family homes and should be treated as such like other single-family homes in Lake Havasu. And that's the decision that we're moving forward with today.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for the division chief?
A comment. After numerous hours of investigating what this actually meant on this amendment, I realized that I didn't have in front of me all the international fire and building codes. And for me to cross-reference these amendments or these add-ons that we're doing, in the future, I will be voting yes on this because after numerous hours, I figured it out. It was this simple and it makes a lot of sense. But to somebody that's new to the industry, trying to find out what we're amending and we're not having actual, the actual international codes in front of me, if in the future we're doing amendment to an international building or fire code, is there any way that I can see the original code prior to any amended?
Yes, we can definitely arrange to make that happen.
Thank you. I really, really appreciate it. And I'm sure Kelly Gary would too because I drove her crazy all weekend. Thank you much.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I'd like to make motion.
Please.
In just a second. There you go. Screen cut up. I move to introduce ordinance number 21-1271, amending the Lake Havasu City amendments to the 2018 International Fire Code and declaring the revised amendments a public record.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is award bid for the backup water supply well facilities project to Schofield Silver Construction LLC. Mr. Hart?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm coming before you with what I would consider an exciting project, seeking a recommendation of award for you. And I've put together a brief PowerPoint presentation that I hope will kind of catch up to speed to where we're at right now. This is our North Well Replacement Backup Water Supply Well Facilities Project, which is Project 108014. This project's purpose is part of an ongoing capital improvement project to improve the reliability of water production in the North Well Field. This is, like I said, an ongoing process and we've had several phases. Just as a reminder, the first phase of this was exploratory wells, where we actually went out and drilled five different wells and did a bunch of reporting and research on those, design and construction. did a bunch of reporting and research on those, design and construction, which totaled two-point-three million in that phase. Phase two, which is what we're in right now, well, as far as phase one, we did drill two wells, as a reminder. Those wells were, one being at the Public Works Department parking lot, the second one being at the water treatment plant. Both of those wells were six hundred feet deep and are, appear to be well-producing water wells, once we get them up. So we're excited about that. So this phase is actually the well facilities themselves and the construction management part of that. And it'll be a total of three-point-seven million, bringing the total for this, the two phases here, to six million as we seek to, to upgrade our North Well Field and the desire in the, in the future to perform maintenance on a horizontal collector well. So it's kind of an ongoing maintenance that we're excited that we can continue to move forward with. This phase, as I said, involves construction of two new well facilities with site preparation, pumping equipment, et cetera. The project's schedule is eight months. The anticipated completion is June of two thousand and twenty-two. The engineer's estimate, we estimated it to be two million seven-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. The low bid came in from Schofield Civil Construction at two million seven-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars. Again, this is two well facilities with one at Public Works Administration Office and the other at the water treatment plant. And it will also include about seven-hundred-and-fifty lineal feet of buried eighteen-inch piping for a connection to our distribution system. Just as a reminder, well twenty-two, as I said, is in the Public Works parking lot, which is convenient. And the second well, well twenty-three, is in our water treatment plant, which is also very convenient for us. So after performing the due diligence, as I shared, we had open bids on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. We had two responsive bidders, Schofield Civil Construction, who came in at two million seven-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, and Kay Constructors, who came in at two million eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. After performing our due diligence, we have gotten a lot of good reports on Schofield Civil Construction, business license, no complaints statewide. A lot of folks that work with them are very pleased with them. And I would like to recommend that they be awarded the bid for the backup water supply well facilities project. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Yeah, this is an ongoing project, as you mentioned, that we've been working on for many, many years. So it's exciting to be able to have freshwater redundancy in our system brought forward to tonight. So are there any questions of members of the council? Councilmember Campbell?
I have a question. As I review the capital improvement funds for the five-year CIP that we took into play, which includes sixty-three-point-four million dollars, of that, thirty-five-point-one million is for cities, utilities, and infrastructure, is what I understand is this is money that we have had and we're holding because it was a fully funded CIP. Is this part of the general fund CIP that, is that where we're getting the funding for this?
Yes, it is. It's coming out of our CIP Irrigation and Drainage District Fund.
But it was previously fully funded as part of our five-year plan, correct?
Mayor and council, or Councilmember Campbell, if I can answer that question too. So these, this is the CIP that is associated directly with the, the water fund, the Water Enterprise Fund. So the water rates and revenues, excuse me, the rates and fees that are collected for the use of the system are split between the operational aspect of the, the budget and the capital operation.
This is now six million dollars that are into this program, just to put these two wells in so that we will always have fresh water. The next phase of this will be actually taking that other collector well offline and fix those fingers that you talked about that have sand in them, so that we can fix those. And that's the whole reason that we're doing this, so that we can fix what we already have. But in order to fix that, we have to have water come in.
Well, as a council member, I would hope that you would choose your words more carefully because always having fresh water is very precarious at this point. And it's not necessarily the issue that we're drilling the wells. I was shocked and astonished that the answer was, I don't know what aquifer I hit. And I feel that we should have that information in two thousand and twenty-one. If it was exploratory, why didn't we know that? And it's right next to the lake. So I don't understand the thinking. Doesn't make sense to me. I agree that we need a new well. Needles well failed, and they did not have any backup. They're getting a grant to replace their well. But all of that information doesn't generate more water. Water is a finite resource in the world. It is what it is. It will never become more or less. We can treat it. We can try and save it. We can conserve it. We can stop using it for a lot of things like landscaping. So I feel that your impression of water and my impression of water are totally different. I care about the environment and the ancient waterway and this beautiful oasis that we're sitting on. So I'm glad that we can pump millions more gallons, because that was the quote in the meeting. So I'm not quite sure how to handle it. And honestly, I thought former council member Brett was the one that brought up those issues and discussed the actual mechanics of drilling for the wells. So it's just, you know, I can educate myself, but he seemed very educated and he is listed still on a study website as a council member. So I don't think it'd be hard for me to get in touch with him. But, you know, it's, it's a big deal. And I have a lot of opinions, so I'll be sure to share those soon.
Thank you for comments.
If I may also, I'll reiterate on that. The secondary well isn't to pump more water. It's through, to pump the water that is being pumped now, we'll stop pumping it from there and we'll start pumping it from the other wells. Not so that we have more water coming out, the same amount of water coming out, so that we can service the people here in the city.
So we're going to reference what we're talking about today, but thank you for that. All right, so the public hearing is closed. Any other questions from members of the council?
Just a statement that the Havasu Heights is on a completely different aquifer than what we're getting our water from here in Lake Havasu City. So for that question.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to award a bid for the backup water supply well facilities project to Schofield Civil Construction LLC in the amount of two million seven-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars.
Second. We have a motion for Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hart. All right, next item is item eight point four, award task order agreement number three to the Engineering Master Professional Services Agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for, for the as-needed water SCADA support project. Mr. Sloane?
Good evening. The next two items on the agenda address the water and wastewater SCADA system. This system, which stands for supervisory control and data acquisition, is the computer hardware and software that monitors and controls our water and wastewater infrastructure throughout the city. A couple of examples of the functions it performs, treatment plant monitoring and alarms at the water treatment plant and the three wastewater treatment plants, reservoir water level monitoring at twenty-seven water tanks, pressure monitoring and pump activation at fourteen booster stations, ten wells, and seventy-five wastewater lift stations, and chlorine residual monitoring in the, in the water system. These computer-based systems require maintenance, upgrades, and repairs to maintain a reliable and functional control system. The city currently only has one SCADA manager to oversee and maintain the entire system. So this as-needed SCADA support project will provide consulting services to supplement in-house capabilities for programming, upgrading the SCADA system as necessary. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
We're talking right now about item, about item eight point four, which is awarding a task order agreement number three to Engineering Master Professional Services Agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group for an as-needed water SCADA support project. We've had the presentation from Mr. Sloane and we are in the process of the public hearing. So Greg, if you'd like to just say, make for the record and then ask your question or comment?
Yes, Greg Logan, and I still have the same question about this engineering study. Is this part of the sewer system expense report?
Yeah, so this is not actually a study. This is to augment staff resources, to be able to keep the SCADA system operating and updated. So it's not a study, it's just augment staff resources.
I understand that the, under the, like I said, sewer system, that was appendix D of the study, I don't see any line item that the lakes may.
Yeah, this is going to be, the budget is in the IDD or the Irrigation Drainage District Water Fund.
Oh.
All right.
Research for project. Thank you.
No, it wasn't you. I was going on backwards order. So would anyone else like to address the council on this matter?
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion. Now, on our side, we're going to be passing the mic back and forth, so everyone can hear us. So, Councilmember Dolan?
I'll make a motion. I move to award task order agreement number three to the Engineering Master Professional Services Agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated for the as-needed water SCADA support project.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. I guess I'll call the, the results. The motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. We'll now move on to item eight point five, which is award task order agreement number one to the Engineering Master Professional Services Agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for the as-needed wastewater SCADA support project. Mr. Sloane?
Thank you. And this, this is identical to the last one. This one was funded by water and this one is funded by wastewater. So the SCADA system, there was more water and wastewater.
Thank you. And so there is, this is coming from budget in the wastewater utility fund. And there is money in there against augments, the staff resources for the SCADA and wastewater side. Is there any questions or comments at council before we open the public hearing? Seeing, Councilmember Lane, do you have a question? No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Vice Mayor Coke?
I'll make a motion. I move to award task order agreement number one to the Engineering Master Professional Services Agreement with Jacobs Engineering, Inc., for the as-needed wastewater SCADA support project.
There, I'll say. Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Coke and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Item eight point six is adopt resolution number two-one dash three-five-four-three, amending and adopting water and wastewater rates and fees retroactively effective for apartments, condos, multifamily, and RV parks, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kozlowski?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an emergency resolution.
I don't know.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This emergency resolution is to reduce sewer base rates for both multifamily per year and RVs per space. But before we get into staff recognition and the briefing for the local financial services, I'd like to talk a little bit about how we got this done. With the IDD set in place by, as of next year, the important that staff brought on and experienced first to assist in completing the utility rate step. During that process, we'll give financial services with selected as effort to assist staff in compiling all the necessary information in order to determine what those rates would look like, in order to maintain not only the water system, but the sewer system moving forward. Through that process, through that nine-month process, staff worked very closely with them to compile all that necessary information, to examine a number of options to our residents and public units, gathering their feedback and compiling all that and bringing that to council for review, selection, and ultimately adoption. Through that adoption process, as of July first, staff began to see, began to receive concerns from our residents as well as council regarding some of the drastic rate increases. With that, we brought back Logan Financial Services to take a little look at our rates and work with staff to determine what we can do to minimize the impact, especially for RVs. With that, we now have Greg Brazzi, our Public Works Director. We'll talk a little bit about the different projects that a lot of this funding goes toward based off of these rate increases, what that will look like, as well as the costs associated with those projects, in order to maintain and provide adequate and safe water for the residents. After Mr. Brazzi, Joe Olson, Admin Services Director, will get up and talk a little bit about the IDD in more detail, as well as talk about the enterprise funds and what those can be used for. And then we will finish off with staff recommendations and a brief presentation for the local financial services on what the, what staff's recommendation will look like moving forward. Would that turn up for Mr. Brazzi?
But before I get to the presentation, I just wanted to let everybody know that our operation and maintenance crews are the best in the business. And they're really on top of all the issues that we may have. And we are in full compliance with the permits that have been issued to us by the state to operate the water and wastewater utility. We do, however, have some aging infrastructure that needs considerable attention immediately. And it's rather expensive attention. So I'll go ahead and flip through my sheets. I think council has the presentations, so that's, that's good. What council's looking at here is the inside of a water tank. Industry standard says we should be recoding the inside of our tanks every twelve to fifteen years, which we have been. That effort on an annual basis was eight-hundred thousand to a million bucks. So what happens here is we strip off the old coatings. We see the deteriorated coating and some of the tank floors. We attach those and we re-code. Proper maintenance like that, we should get an old steel tank to last fifty years or more in some cases. Unfortunately, the average age of our original water tanks is fifty years. So we are right at that cusp right now. And we do an individual analysis on all our water tanks and do a lifecycle cost analysis to determine if it's better for us to rebuild a tank, or if it's more cost-effective for us to tear it down and just build a new case. What we're seeing lately, the last two tanks that we took a look at, the numbers show that it was a better deal for the city to just demolish those old tanks and build a new one. So we've got one, one of those tanks under construction right now. It's at a construction cost of two-point-three million dollars. So what I'm pointing out here is because of the age of our tanks now, we just went from a million-dollar annual maintenance program to a two-to-two-and-a-half million-dollar maintenance program to rehab or rebuild our water tanks. We keep along with twenty-six of them. So going forward, that's a very expensive endeavor. We also have fourteen booster stations out there. One of the things I kind of glossed over for everybody was this picture of the, of our water system. If you look at this map, you see the color, different colored bands. Those are pressure zones. Our city is built on a hill, so we have our, our water system is separated into different pressure zones, which help equalize the pressures. So I don't know if you can see my cursor, but what happens in general, our water system, the lowest pressure zone is pressure zone one, that's at the lowest elevation near the lake. And then the next pressure zone is two, is that we go up the hill, three and four. So what happens is all these booster stations push it up. The booster stations in pressure zone two push the water up to pressure zone three, and then the water gravity feeds back into the residential neighborhoods. So to move that water up the hill, we require fourteen booster stations. And the booster stations are original with the tanks, so they're getting very old too. So what I wanted to show you on the left-hand side of these pictures is a standard booster station in a typical condition. The state requires us to have a, a backup water plan. Uh, the state requires us to have a, a backup water plant, a backup system of some kind at all of these booster stations in the event we lose electricity. Uh, the older booster stations you can see, uh, has a backup system, but it's not a generator, it's actually a gas powered pump. So, if we were to lose electricity to get water into our water distribution system, staff would have to drive out to each of the booster systems and flip the switch to turn that on. And they're so old, uh, we have to be out, uh, exercising these a couple of times a week just to make sure they still run. In the bottom picture on the left, you can see that there's a, a, a chain and a come along situation to hold some piping together. That's a, that's a temporary situation, but it's, it's been temporary for a little over a year now. That, that entire station is scheduled to be replaced. If you look at the pictures on the right-hand side, that's a brand new booster station we just built last year. You can see it's got a, a proper backup generator, it actually generates electricity, and it comes down automatically should we lose, uh, power to the city. And it also has a proper, uh, electrical room in the, on the old booster station, the electrical panels are exposed to the elements and, uh, it's, uh, the sun is very hard on those electrical panels. Our new booster stations have electrical rooms with air conditioning on them. And then, of course, the bottom picture just shows the new piping, new pumps and no chains holding them together. Uh, I mentioned, we, this one was built last year at a cost of two million dollars. So, that's probably the least expensive one we're ever gonna do. We've done four of these since two thousand and nine, so we have ten, uh, ten more booster stations to upgrade at, at a cost of anywhere two and a half to four million dollars. And these are all programmed in the C I P. Uh, similar situation with the water main replacement program. The city owns and maintains over five hundred miles of water main. Uh, the average life expectancy is fifty to sixty years. Uh, currently, we have many different materials, uh, of pipe in our system, which means we have to carry a heavy inventory, uh, three, four different kinds of fittings and those types of things. So, we'd like to get to just one standard, uh, like PVC, C nine hundred pipe. Uh, PVC is polyvinyl fluoride, ductile wire pipe, and asbestos cement pipe. Uh, we really should be put, replacing, uh, our water main on a seven to ten mile cycle every single year. Uh, if we were replacing ten miles a year in fifty years, the stuff we, we put in today is gonna be ready for replacement. But, uh, due to funding, staffing, those kind of things, our C I, our current C I P currently only includes one point five million, which gives you just about two to two and a half miles, uh, of, uh, replacement pipe rather than the, the desired tank. The water treatment plant. Everybody remembers when the water treatment ga, plant got built, the picture on the left is actually a picture of the plant being under construction, and it was taken in two thousand and three. So, our water plant right now is approaching eighteen years old, and it's held up very well, uh, but we are starting to see some equipment failures. Um, even well maintained eighteen-year-old equipment doesn't work as well as it did, you know, fifteen years ago. And depending on what, uh, which equipment piece is malfunctioning, it could have a adverse effect on our water quality. So, this is something we, we're keeping a very close eye on. A quick story about the high service pumps. The high service pumps are the, the large pumps at the end of the treatment process that pumps the water out into our system. That's twelve at this plant, um, and they're eighteen years old. So, last year, uh, we started looking around to see how much they would cost. We put in this year's budget, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, and we were gonna place four pumps. And then when we went to do that, that wasn't enough money to do that anymore. So, the, the votes went up and we could only do three, so, um, and again, there's twelve. We're only gonna get three done this year for three hundred thousand dollars. And the other two pictures are at the plant site, it's existing equipment, I just put them in there because I think, uh, it shows, uh, the age of it. The plant needs attention. Next topic is water source and well development. And if you had a microphone, I could probably turn over the, uh, this slide to councilmember Lynn, as you described the situation so well in, in your last presentation. Um, and you just ordered a contract with Jason for a few million bucks to finish up this project. And the pictures on the left are, let me just read the slide. In July of two thousand and twenty, we did five borings to see, I guess, to, to, to find an area to drill some new wells that were actually, uh, that had, could yield water, we did test pumping on, uh, to supplement our backup water supply to the point where we had enough where we could take the collector, the horizontal collector well offline. So, Jason went through all this. That casing you see in the bottom middle picture, that pipe is five hundred fifty to six hundred feet into the ground, and that's, that's where we get our water. That pierces the aquifer called the Colorado River Aquifer that is below, uh, the Colorado River and adjacent to the river. That's where we get our water supply, uh, but we have to go six hundred feet down to get it. So, we've spent, uh, two years and six million dollars just to get two new production wells online to supplement the existing wells we have in the, uh, in the central well field and the north well field. So, we've got four existing wells we currently use as backup. These two new wells, between the six of them, will have enough water supply to take the horizontal collector well offline for an extended period of time and service it and, and get that back, uh, to working order. Uh, councilmember Lynn was right, we, when that thing was installed seventeen years ago, it was our main water supply for the, for the last fifteen years, the last two years, um, we started pulling some sand, which was following, following, it filters at the treatment plant, so we had to do something. That's when we realized we didn't have ample water supply to take it offline. So, we've been really, been very ginger with that horizontal collector well. Um, and once these, once we'd finished with these two new production wells, we could take that offline. So, those are the big programs, uh, on the water side of things, wastewater, you can tell, I'm sorry, I forgot about our treatment plants. We have, yeah, we have three wastewater treatment plants. We have a, a treatment capacity of eight point two million gallons per day, and we're currently treating anywhere between four and four and five, and four point five million gallons per day. This system, our wastewater system is quite complicated, we have more than sixty lift stations in it, forty-two mile to four is main, three hundred and ninety mile grabbing sewer main. And then, something that people don't talk about often is the disposal of the clean water when it comes out. So, that's always a challenge. Uh, we have two percolation ponds up at the island treatment plant. We have Bado Zone wells at, uh, at the north regional plant. Of course, we have contracts with a couple of golf courses, which I think is the best use. And to move that clean water around the reuse water, we have fifty miles of force main. Treatment plants, uh, the, the picture on the top are the membrane cassettes at the north regional plant. You probably recognize that photo. Uh, recently, council approved a five hundred thousand dollar expenditure to replace the membranes in drain three. There's three drains out there. These membranes last anywhere from seven to ten years. Three drains, so that's an ongoing, very expensive capital cost to keep that north plant, uh, running. And the, the reason we chose that, that method, uh, it's a high-quality, uh, treatment, the water's very clean, and it's easier to inject into the water. Um, due to the close proximity to the airport, we, the, the state would not allow us to have open ponds, uh, because it attracts fowl, birds. The two pictures on the bottom are the Mulberry Treatment Plant on the left and the irrigation basin at the island treatment plant on the right. Those are part of the original sanitary district. Uh, they were commissioned sometime in the nineteen sixties, just like me. And when you get this old, that requires a tremendous amount of maintenance. So, uh, all kidding aside, uh, a few months ago, council did award a contract to Jacobs Engineering Group to do a wastewater master plan with a chap, a whole chapter dedicated to plant efficiency optimization. Uh, coincidentally, Jacobs has been here, or is here all of this week scouring through our treatment plants, um, and gathering information. Okay. Lift stations. Gross, right? Like I said, we have sixty lift stations and we have an aggressive cleaning program just to try to save these pumps. Uh, we have all kinds of different sized pumps in these lift stations. They average about eighty thousand dollars per pump. The state, uh, requires that we have two pumps to handle the flow and a backup pump. So, we have three pumps in every one of these lift stations that average eighty thousand dollars. So, that's, uh, a little over thirteen million dollars just in pumps. And because of the corrosive environment, uh, intense maintenance might get you five years with a pump. Usually at three, you have to pull the pumps and change the oil and change the seals and that kind of thing. So, it's, it's very expensive. Uh, but what we do to extend the life is we, um, we use these backhoe trucks in the lower, uh, right-hand corner of those. Those are what, um, the, those trucks are very important to us. They cost five hundred thousand dollars each, and they're going to last ten years, and because they're used so often. All these lift stations, if we, this, you see that we call this a muffin monster pulled out of a, uh, the Bombay Lift Station. That's one month of rags. If those get caught in our pumps, they're gone. So, um, like I said, intense cleaning program. These are, uh, those, uh, flushable disposables that are falsely advertised, they do not break down. Please do not flush, uh, disposable wipes, because that's, that's what we get. And then, uh, I mentioned treated effluent before, um, you know, um, we're always looking for clever ways to dispose of this effluent. The picture in the middle is, is actually of a project we did last year to connect London Bridge Beach to the island treatment plant's disposal system, to the effluent system. It was a five hundred thousand dollar project, but the park was literally adjacent to the, to the treatment plant. So, it was, it was, uh, a lot less expensive than, uh, connecting, say Rotary Park or Cypress Park, which we plan to do one day, but pipe and pumps is very, very expensive and, and you have to maintain them. Um, if the, if the area to the, to the north of the city, if that, uh, that's where this, we anticipate growth, um, those flows will go to the north regional treatment plant. Again, we're required to inject that, uh, treated effluent into the ground. This is a photograph of one of the Bado Zone wells, it's about a hundred fifty feet deep. They're about five hundred thousand, there's six of them out there right now. We have one, uh, well in our, our C I P for next year. Uh, but truthfully, we could probably use three more additional just because we have to be prepared. We had a little bit of scare with the Refuge Golf Course, it seems like the future for the, of the Refuge Golf Course may be up in the air a little bit. We send about eight hundred thousand gallons of water to them, uh, from the treatment plant every single day. So, that would be difficult for us to find a way to get rid of, uh, without adding additional, uh, Bado's wells. And we can't send it down to the island treatment plant, it's all piped together. But, uh, eight hundred thousand gallons a day would probably trigger us to build another, uh, percolation pond. We have two percolation ponds right now. Um, we don't have room on the property, on our footprint, we have to purchase property. Um, so, w, like I said, we're doing very well right now, but something could happen and we gotta get rid of the water. And the city, if you notice, uh, on the walking path around the island, uh, the park's got, they planted, uh, a few hundred trees, I think, and piped some of this effluent over there to help us with more of a plan, but it's, it's all very expensive. Um, I think that's my last slide, but if, I do have one more bit of, of great information for you to consider if you're wondering why, uh, why these rates are so important. Uh, the, the, the C I P, the capital improvement program that the council approved earlier this year and for the next four years, the five-year C I P for, uh, water and wastewater totals, uh, about thirty-five million. And that's based on available funding and what the staff can, can accomplish, staffing levels. Behind the scenes, we also have built a, uh, we al, we've also built a, a C I P based on our needs. Based on what my, uh, our master planning tells us, and, and, and we put numbers to those projects. The same five years based on our needs is more than doubled, it's closer to eighty million dollars. So, we're, we're behind on our maintenance, um, but we're doing very well with the available funding we do have. So, I know everybody wants to get to the, to the meat of the meeting, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to who represents.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Frazee. Uh, councilmember Lynn, and then it looks like councilwoman Lynn.
It may be great, I kind of wish that we, the pumps on the community would have saw this presentation before, because that explains a lot. I guess the question I have, and I don't even know if you answered it, Jill, or if there's an answer to it, but what is the actual current debt or future debt and services and maintenance we're trying to keep or tackle with the revenue with these different rates? Like I said, it would have been really nice to have known this is why you're being, like, say, like this actual vision of it. So, do you have that number, or what we're trying to tackle?
I don't, well, I think what we're trying to tackle is replace the irrigation and dip drainage dip, which is five point seven million dollars per year. This is an example, um, you know, I could do a couple of these projects maybe per year for five point seven million. It's, 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 that, that's why we're behind, I guess. That, that's what I was trying to show, there's a tremendous need to catch up on our maintenance simply because, you know, it's, it's all original equipment and it's fifty, almost sixty years old.
Councilor Moses?
Thank you. Uh, and so with this new rate structure, some of the things that you say we're not keeping up to standards we'd like to be up, like the water main replacement lines and some of the plants, um, will this new rate structure allow us to accomplish our goals of seven to ten miles of water main replacement and updating plants?
No, um, it, I don't believe so. Our, our goal, public works role in this was to, uh, you know, provide budgets, provide the tenure plans, what, how much money are we going to need? Um, but the, the rate study, which the next group is gonna focus on, i- is more geared towards replacing the five, or nearly six million dollars that we're just not gonna have next year.
So, we're still not gonna be getting enough funds to get to some of these studies?
Well, no, but there's no community that actually does. You, you do the best you can with what you have and...
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of questions for you, Greg, so you can, uh, maybe explain some more to the people. If you can go back to the, the one, uh, slide, it was one of the first ones where we have the, the three treatment plants, Mulberry Island and North, uh, the sixty lift stations, uh, which lifts, uh, sewer up to the, the main. Uh, if you could just explain to everybody what, what does a percolation pond do? Uh, most of this is pretty self-explanatory, but not everybody knows what a percolation pond does and what a Bado swell is. If you could explain that to everybody, we'd be happy to.
A, a percolation pond is, is really nothing more than a great big, uh, hole in the ground and that, that we fill when they're treated effluent, and it percolates slowly through the earth and replenishes the aquifer, or ultimately gets back in the river. So, those, it's a, it's a primitive disposal method that's, uh, been around forever. But, again, these are quite old, our per, percolation ponds, so, um, we have two, so we can always have the ability to drain one that flows at a low, we have the ability to advert flow, so we can shed flows off that plant. Because we have to scarify the bottom, which is to loosen the soil again, because what happens is it gets, it gets plugged after, after a while. So, it's, it's, maintenance intensive for such a, a simple method. The Bado Zone well, uh, that's just an injection pump. It's called a Bado Zone, it's, it's the shallow zone below the surface, uh, that doesn't hit groundwater. So, the technical term is, is Bado's zone, um, if you're talking to a geologist or something like that. But it, it's really just injection, uh, we can't, you know, if we were gonna have a, a, a percolation pond, say, out at the north plant, we would have to have very expensive cover over the top of it, because if, we're not allowed to have open ponds, open water, because that attracts birds and with their close proximity to the airport, that wasn't, uh, going to be allowed by the state.
So, quite simply, it's just a way of injecting the water back into the ground so that it can percolate down. Hopefully, we reuse again one day.
That's correct. Yes, we ship some to the island treatment plant, we ship, we push some out to the Refuge Golf Course, and whatever's left, we take care of on our side and inject it into the ground.
Now, uh, also, last year, we had a couple, um, emergencies that we had to deal with, that they cost us quite a bit of money. Uh, one of them, anybody that ever drives around Mulberry and Ninety-Five, uh, we all know what a terror that intersection is anyway. Um, but we had that major sewage spill, uh, and it started flowing down towards the lake. Luckily, um, you guys were able to get in there and get it stopped, so we didn't, uh, we didn't have any issues with A D Q. But, uh, what, what did that entail in the past wise in order to...
But what did that entail in the past wise in order to get that stopped? So we didn't get fined by ADQ. Right, we had a full-blown attack on that when all divisions in Public Works was helping out. And we also had to hire many local contractors as well. And if you remember for that one on Mulberry and 95, the staff had come to council and asked for contingency funds to pay those outside contractors. And it was just under $100,000, many, many thousand dollars in change in contractors. The staff time for that was 433 hours and that totaled $15,900. So it's just, staff time, guys getting paid anyways, and then whatever overtime was just under $14,000. Okay, and then also we had a pump failure. Was that, I don't know if you all could see it on my monitor here, but that's back up there. The rag monsters that we talk about here every so often. We may actually be able to bring that up. Y'all, before you came, this is disgusting. This is the stuff that gets flushed out the toilet that Mr. Prosser was talking about. Is that the reason that that pump failed is because of this type of issuing can be prevented in the future? Yeah, that was the influent pump station failure. Yes, we had some additional pressures on those pumps due to rags. And we, one of the fittings blew out and flooded the entire area by the airport. Couple more. One more.
More slide, Greg.
There you go. Yeah, that's what we pulled out of the, we pull that out of our lift station every single month.
Just another topic point before we get into details. I know that rates are uncomfortable, but one thing to keep in mind is we're looking into this whole system is we're running a nonprofit utility company. I don't know if we all are not as happy. I am not, but the internet service I have in my town, it's more than doubled the last few years alone. Our rates have not really changed in the last 10 years. As you say, it's very important to remember it is a nonprofit water company and the fees that we collect have to be able to pay for the infrastructure. And we can be responsible and stay ahead of it. We may be irresponsible and wait till we have a major problem and have more, you know, under that to go after a bond and go after other options. But unfortunately, I think we kicked that can down the road a little too long and I think we need to stay ahead of that. But like I said, just to remember it's a nonprofit utility company. Keep that in mind how it goes with other utilities. If we were for profit, our bills would be three times probably what they are right now, so.
Thank you. So if we could, I believe Ms. Olson is going to give some background about the IDD, the exploration, and we'll let Old Dan go and then we'll bring it back to council so we have the full picture of the presentation and we can have a conversation, ask questions of all staff and the public as well. So Ms. Olson?
Thank you. Yes, just kind of a refresher on the way we account for our utilities. And most cities will do this for any services that the city provides that are primarily supported by user fees. Those are placed in what we call enterprise funds. There are different types of funds that governments use to account for the revenues and expenditures depending upon the nature of the service being provided. The general fund is just what it sounds like for anything that's not covered by any other fund, not a special revenue fund or enterprise fund. Those funds go in the, are accounted for in the general fund like your property taxes and your sales taxes. Enterprise funds are what we use to track those services we provide. We operate similar to how a business will operate. So it's a self-balancing set of accounts, that's what it is. And we have an enterprise fund for our water service that you're vacationing in Drainage District and for the wastewater or sewer. So we do track those funds separately. They are segregated from all other funds and the, those utilities, those utility services should be self-sufficient. So we should bring in the amount of revenues, primarily user fees, that we need in order to cover all of the costs. One of those costs that we cover right now in the sewer fund is debt service. And that's about $15.7 million per year right now. So that is a huge part of the operations and capital costs that we incur in those funds. For the irrigation and drainage district, the IDD or our water fund, when the district was formed, an assessment was created and that assessment was in the form of a per-acre charge. So for all of the properties residing within the IDD, a per-acre charge was assessed. Back when that occurred, a determination was made that for any parcels that were less than an acre, there would be a minimum half-acre charge. So anyone with less than half an acre will probably see on their property tax bill an irrigation and drainage district amount being charged at about $134.44, which is half an acre because it's half the amount that we gave the county to assess on a per acre basis. So the IDD will run for one more year, the current, or the correct this year that we in, that we're in right now. So as of June 30th, 22, at the end of that day, the IDD will no longer exist and the assessment that you see on property taxes for that purpose will no longer show up on any future public tax bills. So we do have this one year of overlap, but starting July 1 of next year, you will not see that chart. So that's $134 to $268 charge, depending on the size of your parcel, that you will no longer have to pay in the form of property taxes because we've set up a system with this rate study that the rates will now cover all of the expenditures. So that was about a $5.7 million revenue amount that the IDD generated. So that now has to go into calculation to determine what the final rates would be. So that's the background on enterprise funds and IDD. If you have any questions, I can have you look at those. I'll turn it over to Goldan.
Yeah, thank you, Jill. If we could turn it over to Goldan, then you'll be available for questions while we have the whole program. So Pat Walker and Kevin with Goldan, welcome, and thank you.
Thank you. My name is Pat Walker and I'm here with my colleague, Kevin.
Yeah, hold in mind that's your mound.
Okay, let me know if it's correct. Okay, and I have with me my colleague that performed the rate study for the City of Havasu City, Kevin Burnett, World and Financial Services. And if you go to the next slide, I'll just recap what we're going to cover in the presentation.
She can barely hear you.
Can you go to the next slide? Okay, so what we're going to cover this evening is the purpose of the analysis, why we're here tonight, why we're asked to come to this. We're going to be talking, I'm going to talk a little bit more about enterprise funds, talk about a phased-in rate schedule that we have that staff is recommending, the fiscal impact to some homeowners and multifamily units and RVs, what that's going to be overall for water and sewer, and then look at some comparisons to some of your neighbors and where that Havasu City ends up. Next slide, please. So back in February, that's when the council had to make the hard decision to increase rates. And as was pointed out, it's been over 10 years since rates were increased. And so what we did is we perform what we call a rate study, and that's just a commonly known term. But there's actually three components of a rate study. The first component is a financial plan where you look at the revenues coming in, the expenditures going out, and then how much of a revenue increase do you need to cover your expenditures? The second part is what we call our cost of service study. And that's where you look at who should be paying for the cost. In other words, it's the classification of residential. Is it multifamily? Is it commercial? How much of a demand are they putting on the system based on their usage that you need to charge them? So that's called cost of service. And that's something that was implemented with this new rate study. And that's what you're seeing as the adjustments in the rate is that it's a full implementation of what we call cost of service and the classifications are paying their correct share. The last part is called the rate study itself. It's talking about the rates and the structure of it. And we looked at all three of those things, both for the water side and wastewater side. Tonight, what we're going to be talking about is the sewer side. And one of the things that we were asked for was if we would be able to run some analysis in our model to phase in the sewer base charge on the multifamily and the RV component, while still doing the things that we always do in every study, which is to maintain adequate cash reserves, to meet debt service coverage requirements. And what that means is you have to meet, not only the annual debt service amount, and we talked about the $13.7 million for the sewer, but you have to get about 1.2 is the minimum up to 1.5 is the policy coverage over your debt service payment every year. And then the funding system cost for operations, capital and debt. Next slide, please. So as Jill mentioned, the whole purpose of the enterprise fund and the water is a utility or considered enterprise funds is to be self-sufficient. As Councilmember Dolan mentioned, it is not making a profit. It's a nonprofit. It's just looking at to cover your costs, not end up covering your reserves, covering your debt service, but not to make a profit. You want to be able to fund ongoing costs to those charges because the customer is getting a commodity. They are getting either water or they're getting treated sewer. And there's a lot of guidelines and a lot of requirements that you have to do. And you've got to build the capital in order to meet those requirements on a federal level, ADQ, on a state level. And it's to protect the public health, safety and welfare because again, drinking water does affect public health and safety as well as sewer treatment. So that's what this is all about. It should not be subsidized by outside funding sources on a consistent or ongoing basis. And there is a state statute in Arizona that says it must be self-supporting. And you can do it maybe for, if you want to increase some funds from somewhere, which we're going to be talking about in a minute with the American Rescue Protection Act. That's fine, but you need to have a system that's self-supporting and it's in the statute to do that. Next slide, please. So the wastewater enterprise fund, we want to talk about what are the rates and the charges for. And as you can see, a big portion of the sewer is the debt service. It's 55% of the total amount of expenditures. The O and M is at 39% and capital is at 6%. Next slide, please. So here's the recommendations coming forward. Before the rate increase on July 1, the multifamily base rate was $23.50 a month. And the base fee is charged for those fixed costs that you have to pay, such as your debt service, your capital and part of your O and M. You have salaries and benefits of employees that still have to take away no matter how much they use. So the base fee is based on that. The charge for the multifamily rate was adopted at $48.67. And the analysis that we were asked to run is if we took American Rescue Protection Act funds and paid for utility projects, sewer projects, could we reduce down, to make up enough revenue, to reduce down the rate to $28.67 or a $20 a month decrease? So that's what our analysis included. The flow rates remain unchanged. But what that means is that this is just a phase in. The, there's rate increases that are proposed in the future that I'll go over on the next chart. But the base rate's increased by $6.73 per year for the next four years in order to achieve the originally projected base charge of $55.57 per month in year five. So we're gradually going back up, making up that difference that the American Rescue Protection Act funds are going to be able to put into the system, but make it up by the fifth year. Next slide, please. So here's a chart of the multifamily and phased-in sewer rates. And as you can see, we're showing the base fee current that was adopted on July 1 at $48.67. Where for, staff is proposing $28.67 to be put in and that's what's on the council agenda for the season to adopt $28.67 to be $35.40 year two, $42.12 year three, $48.85 to get up to $55.57. What that means is we calculated what the revenue loss would be. And as you can see, there's $829,911 that will have to be paid for by the American Relief Fund projects. The projected increases were 3, 3, 3, 2, 2, 2. And now because of the cumulative effect of not doing a rate increase, they become 3, 4, 3 and 1/2, 3, 2 and 2. Next slide, please. So next is the RV rate. And this prior to July 1 was at $4.50. And now the rate was $24.34 that was adopted per month for the base fee charge. And again, the recommendation is to go down to $14.34, a $10 decrease. The base rate, however, again, is a phase in, is going to be increased by $3.36 per year for the next four years in order to achieve the proposed base and end up at being at $27.79 per month in year five, which is on the next chart. If you can go to the next chart. So again, we're just showing the base fee, what it's going to be currently up to year five. We're also projected out the annual revenue loss, which is $524,065. And the increases that we're proposing for were 3, 3, 3, 2, 2, 2. And again, we're going 3, 4 and 1/2, 4, 3, 2 and 2. So with that, I will turn it over to my colleague who is going to be going over the sample bills so we can see what the impact will be of different users. Is that okay?
All right, thanks, Pat. So as Pat said, I'm going to get some context for what this means in terms of different customers. So these are sample bills. These are based on actual customers on the system, what their actual usage was for a month. So up right now, we have two multifamily customers and an RV customer. So the first multifamily customer would be a two-unit customer, two-dwelling unit customer. In the middle is a four-dwelling unit customer and then an RV park with 20 spaces. So you can see the blue bar is what the monthly would have been prior to July 1, prior to the adoption of the new rates. The orange bar is what the monthly bill would be under the current rate structure today. And then the gray bars would be what the monthly bills would be under the phased-in approach. So next slide. So we've got three of these, so it's going to be the same type of information. The previous slide where it's going to be the smaller units, smaller number of dwelling units for multifamilies, smaller number of parking spots per RV. So this is getting into more of an average. So we've got multifamily at 32 units, 32 dwelling units, 37 dwelling units, 46 dwelling units, and then an RV park with 398 spots. So again, you can see the blue bar represents what the bill would have been previously before July 1. The orange bar is what the bills are currently under the rate structure today. And then the gray bar is what the bills would be under the phased-in approach. Next slide. So then this is the last of the three. So this is getting into the higher end, larger dwelling unit complexes and RV parks. So 168 multifamily dwelling units, 224 multifamily dwelling units, and then 637 spots in the RV park. So again, the blue is where we were at before, the orange is today, and then the gray would be under the phase in, what the monthly bill would be. So next slide. So this is providing a little bit more context again. So what we did in this case was we took those monthly bills and we divided it by the number of units in each of those developments so you could see what the bill is on a per-unit basis and then compared that to what a single-family bill is on a per-unit basis. So the single-family bill is what the bill is today. So you're at $59.89. And then again, so the first grouping of bars would be a two-unit, two-dwelling unit multifamily. The second group in the bars, a four-dwelling unit multifamily and then the RV park with 20 units. So you can see how the cost per unit compares to that of a single family. Next slide. Same thing again, so this is getting back into our more average size. So the 32 dwelling unit multifamily, 37 dwelling unit multifamily, 46 dwelling unit multifamily, and then the 398 RV parks and how they would compare to an average single-family home bill. And then one more, next slide. Next slide. Okay, so then this is the highest group. So the ones with the 168 multifamily dwelling units, the 224, and then the 637 unit RV park. So what their bill would be per unit as compared to a single family. Next slide, please. So then we're going to do some comparison to what your neighbors are. So this is something that we're always asked for, it's something So this is something that we're always asked for, it's something that Pat and I always have the caveat, and it's really hard to get an apples-to-apples comparison when you're comparing this utility to a utility of your neighbors for all the different reasons that we've got listed up there. The biggest one, which we've got in bold up there, is because not all of your neighbors have a multifamily or an RV rate. Some of them have residential, includes multifamily, single-family, everybody even one. In some cases, multifamily falls under the commercial customer class. So it's really hard to do an exact comparison to you and your neighbors, but at the same time, we wanted to show you how you do stack up. Next slide please. So this is the monthly water and sewer combined bill for these eleven different entities. So this is a multifamily with four units, three-quarter inch meter. Again, this is based on an actual customer in the city. So you can see Yuma would be on the left at a hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents a month. Buckeye is going to be on the far right at three hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-one cents a month. And then you can see where Lake Havasu City was created prior to adopting the new rate structure. They were at two twenty-seven, sixty-two. Under the current rate structure, it goes up to two twenty-nine, seventeen. And then under the phase-in approach, the monthly bill would drop to one forty-nine, seventeen. So this is a smaller and smaller size multifamily complex. Next slide please. So this is the same type of information, but it's with a sixty-six unit dwelling unit multifamily with a six-inch meter. So you can again see Yuma's down at the bottom, they're forty-four, sixty-three. You can barely see the green at the top there, and that's because the way Yuma's rate structure is set up is that they have a flat charge per pound or per meter. So with a sixty-six dwelling units, they're getting charged thirty-six dollars and ninety-one cents for sewer for those entire sixty-six dwelling units. The same with Casa Grande, they're at twenty dollars and ninety-six cents per meter, so regardless of whether it's a three-quarter inch meter or a six-inch meter, they're charging their sewer customers twenty dollars and ninety-six cents. So they're fairly uplift on theirs too. So you've got Yuma again at the bottom end at forty-four, sixty-three, all the way to Prestit at the far right at twenty-eight thousand five hundred and five dollars per month. And then you've got Lake Havasu City, we've got the current at seventy-eight, sixty-two. We've got the prior, they were down at six eleven, six thousand one hundred and twelve oh eight. And then under the phase in, they'd be somewhere in between the two at the sixty-five, forty-two, seventy-two. Next slide please. So then the last thing that we wanted to do here was just kind of show a sample billing statement, so this is what your actual monthly bill would look like that you get every month. So it's got your water volume, your base charge, what you're paying, your water usage charge, your sewer charges. So right now, we've got the sewer charges listed as two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and then we've got a line down at the bottom that we've added in, so the revised sewer charge would be one thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars for this customer, so about nine hundred dollars per month savings by going through that phase-in approach. Next slide. So that's all we had is our formal presentation, and we're happy to get any questions.
Thank you. Do there any short questions, Council? Let's start with Councilmember Dolan.
I just have a quick question for clarification. So those prices we were going through page after page, do those also include flow rates? Or can their bill, you're talking about it being, but do they use? Because like on residential, it's a sewer cap that maxes out, so how do the flow rates apply to the numbers we're looking at?
So those, the numbers that we were looking at, so those were actual customers. So what we looked at was the number of units multiplied by that cap. So anything that fell above that would not get picked up in that bill. So that was an actual bill based on their actual flows and their actual dwelling units.
Councilmember Dolan?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding how this is offered. Can you say it real quick? I just have to see if I'm understanding.
Okay. We'll just take one.
Oh, page twelve or slide twelve? Okay. So like, I just stop for clarification. Right now, the previous, I would ask one under six or seven, the previous was four thousand five hundred, right now it's at fifteen, and the phase in is nine hundred. In five years, that nine hundred is going to get fifteen hundred again, right?
It would increase.
By the fifth year, we're going to be up to that nine again, right?
Roughly, yes.
That'd be a lot?
And that's what that, when you, because when you look at it, I'll get there. I just want the audience to understand, they'll say that I think I'm understanding. We're still in five years, going to be back up to that mark.
Any other comments or, yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Well, I remember when I was campaigning for office and I was told we have to increase every tax, lease tax, sales tax, use tax, everybody, property tax possibly. And I was told, and this is the truth, I was told, you have your bills right Nancy? Yes, you do. And then you have a savings account right Nancy? Yes, I do. And when your bills get higher than your savings account, we're in trouble, and that's what's happening. At that particular time, I did what I did, what I have been doing for this rate study for the past four months, is dug extremely deep. What I found during that process is our savings account was not being depleted. It was growing monthly. I was told I didn't understand budgets, government budgets are a little different, and I'm going to get to a point here. It ended up that I was right, and we didn't raise any taxes. I believe I'm right with this rate study. I have a lot of concerns about the rate study. When I was campaigning, I had some basic business ideas to put in place that were really clean and cut to replace the five point seven million. Because everybody up here, we only told, were told we had to replace the IDD money. And the hundred and thirty-four dollars, which we didn't even know at the time, that's something I found out just recently, that we all had the minimum of a hundred and thirty-four dollars per parcel. It wasn't per acreage, it was per acreage, but we all had a minimum parcel rate. That meant every condo complex in this community was being taxed at a hundred and thirty-four dollars. I see condo units as small as five hundred square feet, and they were taxed at a hundred and thirty-four dollars per parcel. That means condos right now are not only being hit with these enormous rates, which are completely unethical, they're also being hit with their previous IDD. If you have a two-hundred unit complex, you're paying twenty-six thousand dollars per square towards our weight, water and infrastructure. As I sit here and see just alone on the rate study, it shows in the next five years, we're going to need capital infrastructure of nine, eight, sixty million dollars for water and twenty-four million dollars for sewer. Our sewer system was built in two, what, what year was it built? Two thousand and eight? Okay. But anyhow, that's a fairly new sewer system for a small city like ours. I've spent numerous, numerous hours on the phone with past mayor and anybody I could talk to from city after city to find out what is going on here. And I understand, maybe our rates look lower than others, but I also was told that we were so proud of our CIP budget. Infrastructure was going to pay for infrastructure Nancy. We're really planning ahead so that we don't get stuck. And we as a council decided that thirty-four million dollars over the next five years was going to be plenty. And now we're being told we're going to need an additional hundred thousand dollars from you, the rate supplier, rates, in five years. That's what this says. And for the record, that's page twenty-seven of the rate study. It states, in first year, we're going to need a capital outlay of twelve million, followed by nine million, followed by nine million, followed by eight. And this really upsets me because the very first year of this rate study, this rate is already off by twenty-five percent revenues. The rate study, brands fake the news, says we're only going to bring in sixteen million dollars but per our end of the year. That's not correct. It's twenty-five percent off. And then over on the sewer side, it states already, so from the get-go, if you're looking at a five-year budget plan, can you imagine if you're already off by twenty-five percent? So now, and now we're off by eleven percent on sewer. And we padded these bills a hundred million dollars. So is, anybody want to see it, go to page twenty-seven where they're adding the actual capital infrastructure into these rates. And so then I was told Nancy, this is an enterprise fund, you don't understand. The next time I get told by the city government that I don't understand what I'm doing, you're going to be told you're wrong. I do my homework. Prove me differently. I spoke to almost everybody in here, every one of them pretty much. Raise your hands if I spoke to you, it's something to do with any of this. Thank you. They're right. This is wrong, and it is a state of an emergency. And I asked a few weeks back, motioned to stop this agenda, to put it on the agenda, to stop this until we, the city council, sit down and realize if we need eight, a million, I mean, what is it, a hundred million dollars worth of infrastructure to put on the backs of our rates. Do we need a hundred million dollars? We were told we only need thirty-four million dollars. Now we need a hundred, and it's on your back that we're going to collect it. So this is an emergency. And when I asked to have this put on the agenda, it didn't get put on the agenda purposely. Because in March two thousand and eighteen, the city staff and the council elected to not allow, it's at the, under the jurisdiction of the city manager to decide what goes on the agenda. They decided even with a second and a third, that it wasn't going to be on there. So in the meantime, I'm asking for a state of emergency. I am asking for us to stop all of this that's already wrong from the get-go. And to give us some time and retro it back, because I don't know if many of you know this today, I am sitting up here with shingles. I have literally ran several businesses, raised children, sent them through college, you know what it's like. Nothing has phased me more than this. Because as a business owner, I would have never, ever treated my customers this way. Never. And I would have stopped it and I would have fixed it. I've said my piece, I really hope that we spot this mess and fix it for the citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So does someone want to address the amount of five, a hundred million dollars in capital infrastructure, and how that would be Ms. Olson or Mr. Frozler or Mr. Fudson? Is that, is that the number over five years, the hundred million?
The honest answer is I don't know right now. It was last year when we provided all the information to the building. We gave them our current operating budgets, we gave them the Water Master Plan that has a ten-year CIP, and we gave them the wastewater master plan that had a ten-year CIP. In addition to that, because the budgets that we were giving them were from a COVID year and kind of light, we added two point five million in operating for each level of water and wastewater. But the ten-year total, I'd have to go back and check.
We're getting rich off that.
All right. So the, just to bring it back to clarify what this rate study is, a ten-year rate study. The CIP plan is a five-year CIP budget that we approved. This is a ten-year rate study that takes into account the capital improvement, debt service, and then operating and maintenance of the system. That's what the entire system is. So if we move money away from one area, then somebody else will be paying for that difference. And that's really what the discussion that we're having here is, is the different classifications. Obviously, we've heard from many of our citizens about, especially on multifamily, living folks, our condo association, those types of duplexes, that the increase has been so high, but their base charge started out so low. And so that is where we're at as far as the equity, when we're talking about equity in the system. So, do any other customers have any, yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Can we go back to this again, then? So after that five years, we're going to be up to fifteen? Are you telling me after the six year, we're going to be higher?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I mean, I really, what does that look like, where people who are multi units, like you're a little stuck, people are purchasing them, selling them, that whole thing just doesn't even make sense.
I have a suggestion, but I didn't want to do that right now. I was really hoping that we, the council, we'd go back and the staff can really look at this and fix this right, not in front of you guys, where you're stuck here all night listening to us argue. But the point is, is if a single-family resident gets forty, five hundred cubits for forty-eight dollars, let's round that off in logical terms, that's a hundred dollars per cubic. I've done a lot of the invoices here, and for a single-family apartment or condo, they, their usage is usually around a hundred and fifty, no more than two hundred. So why don't we do it dollar for dollar? If it's, let's just say for the sake of rounding it, Jill, everybody else can do the fine digital numbers. But if you want to take, if you think a single-family residence gets five hundred cubits for free for forty, fifty dollars, then if condos only use a hundred and fifty, maybe let's do a base rate of fifteen dollars and then give them the hundred and fifty like a single-family resident. If you're trying to make this all apples-to-apples, this is the farthest thing from apples-to-apples I've ever seen. And not only that, you have commercial, the same thing. So again, I was told I wasn't smart enough to give you good options, that we had to hire consultants. But right now, I disagree, that I think between all of us up here, we can come up with a better solution that we have in front of us right here. And the other thing we have for us is in the last two years, or year, last year, our savings is up by twenty-two million dollars. Not only that, yes, our general fund can help with infrastructure. It has happened in the past unless that new statute that you were talking about no longer allows us to use general fund money for infrastructure. Also, if you're worried that we're not going to pay our debt, when we did our debt services, we also put in a statement and a clause that stated, at any particular time our rates did not cover our debt services, we could use sales tax revenue. And ladies and gentlemen, you've been working your butts off, and we've been bringing in revenues hand over fist. Stop this mess. We weren't going to do it until July first. Why is this so hard to understand?
I happen to disagree with a lot of what Councilmember Campbell had to say, so feel fair with me. First off, it's not on the agenda, so it really can't be talked about, but I do want to clarify something that was misspoken. The city manager does not have the authority to keep any city council member from putting something on the agenda. He doesn't have that power. When we made the change in twenty eighteen, that was a change where previous, is it okay to talk about this? No, it's not. Okay. We can't talk about it, I clarified it, we'll talk about that at a later time. So because it's not on the agenda, it can't be discussed. But what I do want to talk about is where we, how we kind of got here, and where we're going, and what my thoughts are on this. And so first off, we talked about the IDD, right? The irrigation and drainage district. So the irrigation and drainage district is freshwater. How are we going to replace the money that the IDD was bringing in for our freshwater system, right? So what happened was we talked about that, we said, you know what? The IDD, when it was first established, was a small portion of the city. So we have different rates for people that live inside the IDD. So we have different rates for people that live inside the ADD. We have different rates for people that live outside the ADD. We have different rates for people that live in multifamily residents. We have different rates for people that live in single-family residences. Let's put all this together, let's study our water system, let's study our wastewater system. Let's figure out exactly what it is that we all have to pay. So we did. We hired a consultant. We can have the city staff do it, but people have heard me say this before. Do you trust the Verifine? Do I trust our city staff? Absolutely. But are they experts in every aspect of this? No, they're not. So we hire a consultant from outside the city to come in and say, okay, this is what your system is. This is what it costs to maintain. This is what it costs to pay the debt. This is what it's going to cost in the future. So, when we talk about the system, and we talk about the city, and let's talk about the city for just a minute. What is the city? You know, we hear people say, the city needs to do this, the city needs to do that. The city is not this big mean-ober that's sitting up on top of a hill telling people what to do. We are the city. The 57,000 people that live in this town are the city. And the 57,000 people that live in this town need to have freshwater taken to their homes. They need to have wastewater to take the bad stuff away. Your toilets, your faucets, your dishwashers, all that stuff when you take a shower, it all needs to go away. We don't have to look too far to see what happens when we have a different type of a system. Right here in the, not within the city limits, but outside the city limits, we talked about Havasu Heights, Canterbury Estates, the area out by Lowe's across from there, those people are not on City Water. They are all on Edcor. That is a for-profit water company. So every month when they pay their water bill and their sewer bill, that all, there's a for-profit thing built into that that they have to pay for. If you can go south of the city, and you've probably read, and I know there's people here in the audience that talk about the infrastructure underneath the ground where the fire department can't even hook up to the fire hydrants. Because if they do, we'll collapse the system. That's right here in this region, but it's not within the city limits of Lake Havasu. We are maintaining our system. And we have to maintain our system, and we have to keep our system. So as you've heard, this is an enterprise fund. That's not for profit. If at the end of the year we have leftover money, then we need to lower the rates. At the end of the year, if we have not enough money, we need to raise the rates. We all have to pay our fair share. Now, when it comes to wastewater, so when you're looking at wastewater, we're talking about flushing the toilet, taking a shower, washing your dishes, doing your laundry, doing all those kinds of things. That's the stuff that goes down the drain, disappears. Sometimes it comes back up in the big red monster that is so disgusting. But those are the things that we have to take care of, right? So we do that. Now, somebody living in a condo, you have two people living in a condo, and you have two people living in a single-family residence. Those people generate about the same amount of wastewater. They take the same amount of showers. They flush the toilet about the same amount of times. They do the same amount of dishes. So each one of those condo units has to pay the same amount as the single-family residences, because they're using the same amount of wastewater. So when we look at these numbers, and we look at, okay, it's $15,504.58. That's what it'll be. That's for 637 units. If you take 637 residential houses, it's the same amount of money. So if each individual unit pays the $54, then it comes out to be the same. So that's when the mayor talked about equity for all earlier, that's what he's talking about. It's equity in the system, so everybody's paying the same amount. Now, when we did this, this study back in, what was it? May the 11th, we talked about it here. They came, and Weldon did a great presentation. And we had a study, we were giving it ahead of time. We had a 59-page study. And I hope I'm not taking up too much time, Mr. Mayor, but I just want to talk about this. We were giving this study. I read that study. I knew, I know, I'm assuming everybody else did too, that the condos that had been paying $11 a month, I think it was $11.50 a month, it was going to go up to $48.67 a person, for our residents, right? We knew apartments would go up from $23.50 to $48.67, and the single-family residences would go up from $41 to $52.14. So everybody's paying roughly the same. What I didn't know, and what I actually found really disappointing, was that if you lived in a condo, you didn't pay your own water bill or sewer bill. I didn't know that. I assumed you did. You paid, I didn't know you didn't pay your own utilities. So when you hear of a condo complex, that their bill went from $2,000 to $8,000, that's shocking. It was shocking to me. It's shocking to everybody. But all I did was bring it up to the same amount that everybody else is paying already. So when you have people that are paying that amount, yeah, it's shocking, but you're not paying, so it went up 400%. It doesn't mean that they're paying 400% more than everybody else. It means that they're paying the same amount as everybody else. So yeah, it was very shocking. So when we brought this back now, what we're talking about today is using these American Rescue Act funds, the ARPA funds. And what we'll do, if this goes through, we use those ARPA funds to use the capital improvement projects, so that we can do capital improvement projects. And by paying for it, that way we don't have to collect as much in funds. And so that will help ease the burden on these multifamily units and tell they can go and have elections and those kinds of things, so that they can figure out, well, are they going to charge each unit the $54 or whatever it comes out to? Right now, they can't do that. They'll end up going bankrupt. We can't do that. Is it fair to the people that are living in the single-family residences? They're not going to be subsidized. It's not fair. It's not fair and equitable to them. Because they're using the same amount of system as the multifamilies are, but they aren't going to be subsidized. They're going to continue to pay it. And as much as we feel bad for all the people that live in the multifamily, we don't represent just a small group of people. We represent 57,000 people in this town. And we have to make it fair and equitable to everybody. So it's not fair, but I will vote for it, because I do want us to be able to protect our multifamily units, so that they can go back, and it gives them five years to figure out how they're going to do this. But it has to be fair and equitable across the board. Like I said, I knew what I was voting for. I've heard people blame the city, or the city manager, or the city staff. When it comes to these kinds of things, you can't blame them. They brought us a report. They gave us the facts. They gave us options. We sat up here and talked about option A, option B. What is the best option? We look at what's the best option for everybody, and then the seven of us vote on it. So if there's anybody that y'all want to blame, we're the seven that you blame. It's us. We were voted by you to represent everybody here in town.
Guilty.
So, yes, I am guilty, and this is about a high school football game, so we don't get up and just cheer. We get up to the microphone like we're supposed to. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. You're still guilty.
So, we've also heard, it's an enterprise fund. Arizona state law says we have to pay for this out of an enterprise fund. So that's what we're doing. Thank you for that.
Well, I was just going to ask, can the city manager talk about these ARPA funds? The federal government has a new, American Rescue, you know, bill, so money's going everywhere going to go. So where did this come from? How much did we get? How much is left? All that stuff. Would you touch on that first for just a second?
Sure. Mayor Sheedy, I'm Councilmember Moses. So we're talking about the American Rescue Plan Act funds, ARPA funds, because we're talking about making up to $1.3 million over the course of five years with the adjustments that would be made, as presented in the current fashion. The idea is to use those funds for the projects that would be needed to operate the water and sewer system moving forward. So Lake Havasu City, there's a lot of background in terms of our allotment. Essentially, we got $4.2 million per year for two years, and a lot of restrictions that are, every city did, in terms of the population. And there's a lot of restrictions that are in place in terms of how that money can be utilized. To the point where we've had conversations about what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. And those funds have to be expended by 2024, and an audit doesn't take place until after the funds are spent, which is about a year or two down the road. Other cities have indicated some of the, they're planning on using those funds. There's no approval process coming from the federal government, and it's just, it's a really weird situation in terms of how those funds can be utilized. We've had some conversations amongst staff, presented some ideas for council and for the public. Our police chief has been in conversations with communication towers. We're having some issues on the south end, excuse me, the south end of the city. And so from a public safety aspect, a new tower, some repeaters, and some radio equipment for our PD would make sense, and some of that. And some of the landowners as well, too, have talked about water and sewer projects that can be utilized, that ARPA funds can be utilized for that, as long as they're serving underserved populations. And if we identify projects that would serve the entire city, then we have a, we feel good about utilizing ARPA funds for those better projects.
Okay. Because, I mean, my understanding of the ARPA funds is, we didn't want to touch it because there's just no way of knowing what the government's going to say, that we can't, you know, really ensure. I mean, can you give me a level of certainty that, like, how comfortable do you feel? I see Kelly mad.
You know, we feel fairly confident. But again, we're not giving any reassurances to any of our questions, and there aren't any city or town across the, across the state, across the country, in terms of how these funds can be specifically utilized. And there's a whole lot of, we feel as confident as we possibly can, given the circumstances. There's a series of FAQs that come out from the Treasury Department, and they change over the course, they change multiple times over the course of the last several months. And again, these funds aren't haunted by how you spend them, until for a year or two down the road. It's for all cities and towns across the country. And at that point, the federal government's going to tell you that that was acceptable use of those funds? Or they're going to tell you that was not acceptable use of those funds, and you debate that.
So will, if, that's worst case scenario, let's say the US government says, nope, can't do that. And will this enterprise fund be able to absorb the $1.3 billion loss over these four years?
So the plan in place is that the utility is, we're going to identify projects that we can use the fund through the ARPA dollars. And that's, we feel confident that we can get to that place.
Okay. Thank you. And then, just as a general statement, I tend to agree with Kelso and Lee. We've got to remember that this is a utility, and we all need it where we pay. I think, I don't think somebody who lives in an apartment should pay less for their cell phone than I do for my cell phone, because I live in a house. That's kind of how I would phrase it. So it, this, the fact that we're bringing everybody even to me makes a lot of sense. Where I think, where we might have went wrong, or where we need to essentially pivot or make an adjustment, is basically how we allow the associations and everybody to catch up. Because the sticker shock is there, and I totally feel for anybody who's in the public or voice their opposition to this, but it is fair. This is, it's fair. We just need to come up with a way where anybody can maybe adjust to it, because basically, everybody's been paying so that we can hold water rates lower for apartments. I remember moving to Havasu from Tucson, and I'm like, geez, Havasu has really high water rates. What's more, low? And that's because I moved into a house that was basically subsidizing the water rates for all the apartments and condos that live in Havasu. So, what, and I know a bunch of condo owners, but if you're going to come up and tell us, I, and here's where I'm actually a little worried. If we can do slide 11, please? Oh, sorry. Um, I'm trying to find it. I was looking for multifamily units. Basically, what I'd like to know is, is with that phase and rate of that first year, will they be able to absorb those increases alone? My worry is that these associations can't do anything right now. There's going to be a period of time where they need to, that they're going to need to adjust. And with the few that I have spoken to that are here tonight, because, you know, they wanted to voice their opinion, I mean, they're not here, but I want to give them an ample amount of time to be able to make that initial adjustment. Because we don't want these associations going broke, or bankrupt. We need them to be healthy, and so I worry about that, not having enough time. So just going to the middle, are they still going to be able to make that happen? So if you can voice your opinion of that, that would be acknowledged for us. And then also, I asked them, without telling them that we have a four-year plan, that the staff is recommending a four-year plan. I asked them, how long do you need to get up to these base rates? That they, after talking, we all kind of agreed that it is fair. How long do you need? And they recommended, ah, just two years. And after that second year, we'd be able to get to being where we need to be. So, okay. I'd love to hear your opinion on that, too. Is it two years, four years, somewhere between? I look forward to hearing them all, you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, we'll level over with the public hearing here for the ball.
Okay. Since you brought it up. City manager, why wasn't my agenda? I have them on the agenda. Okay, I'll move on. But if I had to be called out, I had to do it. You know what I mean? All right. For the people that are saying that we, I knew what I was reading and what I was doing, and obviously I didn't do my part, I'm going to read this. Under option B, which we picked, this is sewer. Monthly minimum charges remain, but the flow, let's move to single-family. Two rate structure options were developed for single-family class. Single-family class. Option A and option B, and it will allow you to say a flat monthly charge is assessed per customer. You're going to get allotted 560 cubic flows for each month, and then assess the flow rate based on the flows of 567, you know, blah, blah, blah. We've heard all of that. But the most important part of this statement, which is a sewer rate study that we all implemented, that we agreed on, is the wonderful comment that says, all other customer classes will continue to be billed under a base and flow approach, except haulers. And then again, I have ran through so many of these bills, it's ridiculous. And to sit here and say that a multifamily person does the same amount is completely inaccurate. If you've actually looked at the bills yourself. An average condo that I saw was only using between 150, 200 max. But the single families get 560 flows for free. How is that fair? And then look at this. We only have one water meter. We have one bill. We have one meter. We don't have 200 meters. We don't have 200 bills. So to sit here and say we actively, we were not equitable, and we're not doing our part, is baloney. You're expecting us to all spend 567 cubic bases to be average with your single-family home. This is so unequitable, I don't know what to say. If it costs $50 for 567 cubic foot for a single-family home, and the average condo at the highest was 250, I mean, when I dug deep, dug deep, it wasn't much, I couldn't find even a 250 cubic per condo. Because most condos are only occupied a quarter of the year. So again, I'm fighting the system, I feel here, and I'm trying to be incredibly logical. So again, I'm fighting the system, I feel here, and I'm trying to be incredibly logical. And I'm trying to be realistic. If you have to bring one meal, a whole like delivery for a whole family to one house, or you have to take deliveries to 15 homes for the same amount of people, what's going to cost you more? This is a one-stop shop. And yes, that said, all other cubic. And when I did all the numbers, including sewer meters, which nobody here even knew what a sewer meter was, that they're there and they've been installed at a very high price. Because I know in Lake Shore Village, exactly how much sewage we use. And it's 160 cubic for the whole complex. The whole complex. 160. Think about that, 127 units with a sewer meter per two sets. Well, it's it's actually 16,000, but we get 100 per, you know what I'm saying? So anybody that's done the math out here like I have, know that that means 160. So at 160, guess what? Our water bill based on a single family home, you can, that's equivalent to almost two to three homes for 127 units. So all my council members up here, please understand, I've done the math. I've talked to everybody. This is a call to the public. They don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair. Let's fix it and fix it right. And another thing here, as we look at, okay, page 18 of the year to date, 12 month, ended June 30, 2021, the IDB. This is the actual income from last year. Operating incomes are including the IDB money, which was 5.6 million dollars, came to 20 million, 530 dollars. That was total revenues. Now think about it if you're a business. 20 million, 530,000 dollars per 2020, 21 and year for the IDB. Do you want to know what our expenses were? 10 million, 977,000. So where's the other 10 million dollars going?
Somebody got rid of it.
So again, we're going broke, everybody, remember. Facts are right here. Do the math. Page, page 18, page 17 in our actual budgets. Page 27 in the rate studies and what they're telling you about the 100 million dollars. In five years, they're going to need capital infrastructure. Okay, I'm done.
I think I'm telling you, you're pulling from so many different documents, separate pages that you haven't shared with the council. So it's not fair for us to to, so we don't know where, I mean, you're pulling year-end, I just, I'm not prepared for the year-end financial from last year when these rates weren't even effective at that time. So they'd be going into effect until July 1. So I mean, just in fairness to the council members, we don't have access to any of this information that you're you're not leaving. We don't have with us tonight.
What's your fault?
Excuse me, June 30th, June 30th, these rates weren't even in effect for last year, so. And these rates weren't, no, these rates are not affected, they didn't go into effect.
Last year, we made 10 million dollars more.
So this is a public hearing, so we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. We did have folks sign up, so we'll start in the order of the folks that signed up and then everyone will get an opportunity. So we'll first start with Jean Holland.
My name is Jean Blue. I live in a condo, I've been here since 99, I live with Gisabelle Soul, where we are putting on the ski. Our our water bill sort of went nuts, just like you guys are discussing. With respect to what he said about, you know, this fairness and stuff, if you want to be fair, I mean, there's always being fair. You can do it any way you want. Water coming in, like the young lady here said, Nancy Campbell, with respect to the Lake Shore Village. We have a meter which comes in and just goes wrong, and it's 100 cubic come in, 100 cubic go out. 100 bucks per 100 cubic, whatever, how we do it, that's the rate. There's 52 units there, but maybe only 20 are occupied, sometimes, sometimes none. But the bite is the fairness is, you've got a gallon of water coming in, you put a gallon of water going out, and it costs X to bring a gallon in and it costs X to send a gallon out. That seems simple and fair to me. Why, why are we all being charged, why did our bill go to like 7,000 dollars? When we only got 100 coming in? Same as always. And 100 went out, same as always. What's going on? And in it, I have a chart. I should have brought it up. It has the red lines, the yellow lines and the black lines, and it lists hotels, motels, gas stations, hospitals, with restaurant, without restaurant. And at the top of the left corner, it's got TSS, total solid something. And then it says BOG, the amount of oxygen required to be eliminated. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking that means your solid waste and the amount of oxygen necessary to dilute it for proper disposal, is that correct? If you look at the chart, homes, condos, everybody uses the least, that's like 200, 250 in both categories. The other things, like restaurants, they're up there 800, 1,000, they're using more. So if I'm correct, it takes more energy or more oxygens to reduce that. And yet they're getting these 32 and 33 percent decreases. And a condo is going 371. And an RV park went up 500? You know, how did they arrive at that? When it costs less for a single family, a condo, an RV park to 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 deliver the product and less to dispose of the product? Why are these other entities that cost more to provide it and more to dispose of it getting 32, 33 percent decreases? I mean, you know, 10 percent increase, 20 percent whatever, but 300 and something, 500 and something, it's it's outrageous. It's just unheard of. And again, just think of this. What if we all went to Smith's to get a gallon of milk? Well, we have an ID card. Your ID, your ID card says residential. You get your gallon of milk for a buck. I'm right behind you. My ID card says condominium resident. I paid six bucks, same gallon of milk. He has a motel. Or whatever, the other one was worth nine bucks a gallon because his ID card decreases the motel. However, the milk cost to produce it and get it on the shelf, 50 cents for him, for me and for him. But because we have this different category of our existence, we got to pay these outrageous different fees. It makes no sense to me. Water in, 10 cents a gallon. Water out, 10 cents a gallon. It's over.
Thank you. The next speaker is Steve Mee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. First, I want to say thank you for what you guys are doing. This is a tough hearing. I've sat in your chair in previous life, I've sat in the council member's chair in previous life, went through the same issue. And I know it's the toughest issue I ever was involved in, not only technically, but emotionally. Okay, so start out, thank you very much for what you're doing. I'd like to read into record here a letter. I represent the Havasu RV Resort. I'm president of the board there. This is a letter from the entire board. Said on behalf of the board of directors for the Havasu RV Resort, excuse me, not behalf of the board of directors for the Havasu RV Resort Board of Directors and the 397 property owners. So I'm I'm the 398, something wrong, but we got 397 property owners located at 1905 Victoria Farms Road. We strongly request that this resolution not be passed as recommended and that the recently enacted sewer rates be rolled back to the previous rate structure until a new rate structure can be evaluated that is fair to all property owners. I understand equity. But I'll say that an RV park or condo is not equitable in flow rate with a with a single residential home. Most of us are there six months out of the year. With the current base, uh, rate structure, we're paying a base rate every month we're not there. Make make it based on flow. What we use, we pay for. The chart, chart below shows our last 12 month sewer costs prior to 7-1, 2021. So I didn't want to look at anything with the with the new rate structures. And the cost utilizing the proposed rate, uh, formula of $14.34 per lot plus the $3.13 floor rate charge. Realized that the rates under consideration are less than the enacted rates that was approved for the 7-1. But there's still more than double our past costs. Even a, uh, even a per lot charge of $6 equates to more than 20 percent increase. You were shown this this document here for RV parks. The projection was for us to go at 502 percent based on analysis. I had us, well, let's just say September of this, of last year, our total sewer cost was 1,964.96. We got a bill for 10,270 dollars. And these bills, these dollar amounts aren't paid by individual, it, we as a resort have to pay them. And so to recoup, try to figure out, it's going to take time for us to figure out. RCCNRs allow us a maximum increase that we could apply to our our own, so. When revaluing, let's see, let me see where I'm at here. When revaluing the rate structures for RV parks, please take into consideration that most of the owners and most RV parks are only here six months out of the year and a per monthly charge would be assessed when the property is not used. Thank you for your consideration and our thoughts. This is a very important issue that needs immediate attention. Please consider taking smaller incremental rate changes in the future. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. Mary Van Roy, 4034 Blue Canyon, Raleigh. And at first, I want to thank Greg Frosley for excellent presentation. I think I've taken that water tour to the city offers and it's very, very impressive. And I don't think many people realize what goes into the infrastructure. And then the other thing is, because we're out in Horizon 6, the board of supervisors did approve 2.7 million for our water infrastructure. So I'm very happy to hear if the city can use some of that for the one-time water infrastructure costs to get caught up a little bit on the expenses. The reason I'm here though is, my husband, my duplex is probably over 30 years ago. We have the same tenants in there forever, we don't charge much rent. But our bill's all more than doubled and of course, it was a shock. And I'm hearing that they have the same problem. Again, having them 30 years, I don't want to hit the tenants with higher rates and I don't think any of us want to do that. But obviously, people who live in the multifamily homes are usually renters and you're going to hit the people that can least afford these increases. So I I actually sent a letter October, or email October 10th to all of you here. And we got some responses. So I brought my water bills with me and show the complete double amount of money. It's, it's kind of shocking. And then the IDB tax is what we're replacing. And I looked at my tax bills this afternoon and that $134.44 is what we're talking about. And that's maybe one month now of my water bill. So it seems that if we're going to replace that and maybe add to that another 5 million to cover the cost, that would make sense. But to double multifamily homes, I I think it's not equitable, but I understand where you're trying to say this. But you can't just pay rates like that. It doesn't seem right. And I don't think it's fair to people who are renters, who can least afford this increase. And I totally understand we need to keep the infrastructure up because we have that in Horizon 6, it's been in the papers for years. And I'm glad we were able to find a solution because we needed it and obviously you do too. So I guess that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. The next speaker is Greg Duffett.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Who recommend, my name's Greg Duffett. I've been up in front of you for the last 18 months or 18, yeah, just about last 18 months or so. I'm here tonight as the president of our homeowners association, not so much as a Havasu patriot, but I talked to the mayor at the last coffee with the mayor. And I'm going to clear that from my perspective, this was about trust and confidence or the lack of trust and confidence in the the decision that was made by the city council in regards to this water and sewer rate increase. And we laid out a lot of different scenarios. Maybe the consultant didn't provide the information that you needed to make an informed decision. Maybe it wasn't passed on to the city council from staff, we don't know. We probably will never know, but ultimately, we're impacted by it. And I'll tell you that with, even with the the attempt that you're making to try to remedy this this thing, it is not going to be enough for our homeowners association. With the $20 decrease that you have provided us, that comes nowhere close to the 5 percent that we are allowed by law, by RCCNRs to increase per year without a vote of our general membership. Which means I'd have to go back to our 96 owners and get them to come back and increase the probably close to 15 to 17 percent just with the reduction that you provided us with this $20 gift, I suppose. You can call it that. So we can't do it. And so, and I'm I'm certain that these other homeowners associations are in the same boat. Councilman Moses brought up a perfect point when he said that we need time, we would need time, a lot of time to build up to where we're talking about, where we need to be to cover the cost of this, a lot of time. We just passed an assessment. It's it's almost a difficult, if not impossible, thing to do, to get 96 homeowners to agree on a $3,000 assessment per unit for our complex and we got it done. Now we got to come back now and say, we're going to need to pass another assessment here to make up the city's sewer and water rate increases just in this year alone, let alone five years from now, one more at $52 or some cents of base rate. There, David, this is, there's nowhere close to being equity in this this whole process, none. There there isn't, there just isn't. You can't tell me that a 400 square foot condo that sits vacant for three quarters of a year is on par with a single family residence that has three kids, two adults and maybe a swimming pool, you know? There's no way. There's no way. What I'm proposing is that you suspend this, this. I I would not support, absolutely would not support you passing this resolution. We already have an emergency resolution out, still hanging out there, don't we, Mayor? A local emergency proclamation that has no substance behind it. And now we've got another emergency coming up here to to deal with this water issue. We can't continue to operate by management by crisis here. So put this thing on hold. Suspend it until you get your heads around this thing. It is the most prudent thing to do, rather than try to impose these ungodly increases on homeowners of multifamily complexes. They they can't do it. They absolutely can't do it. I know, speaking for us, we cannot do it. We will go bankrupt with these rates. And in five years, all you're doing is spreading this out, a little less pain over a five-year period of time. But for us, at five years, at at that rate, times 96 units, it's close to $62,000 a year we'll be paying for sewer. $62,000 a year for just the sewer, for our complex. So I'm asking you to suspend this. Don't, this resolution should not get passed tonight. Shouldn't get passed. Put a stop to this, go back retroactive to July until you can get your head Put a stop to this, go back retroactive to July until you can get your heads around this thing and introduce this in a way that it's not going to cause a disparate impact, which it has. I asked you, Mayor, at that coffee with the mayor, you know, did you know that this was going to have a disparate impact on multifamily homeowners? You said no. He said yes. Yes, we did know, but we didn't think it was going to be this bad. Okay? So my question is, tonight, is this, is this a political attempt to try to, to keep the pushback from coming on you? Because it's going to fail. Just put this thing to bed. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
This is Bonnie Butler. I know a lot of you up here, and I thank you, Nancy, very much. So I am a Lake Havissey City resident. I've been living in the same duplex since March of two thousand and eleven. In March of two thousand and sixteen, I bought the duplex. Next to me, I have two kids living with me. One is twenty-eight, one is thirty years old. They're making minimum wage right now. I charge them a thousand dollars a month for a two-bedroom, two-bath. It is a fair price. I did not jump on the bandwagon with everybody else and raise the rents because it was the thing to do. I have never raised their rent. My water bill in eleven, ten years has been no more than a hundred and five dollars for the duplex. I have to pay because I have one meter, okay? And what Greg said is absolutely correct. You're killing the duplex people. So basically, from a hundred and five dollars a month, my bill went sewer from forty-seven dollars a month to a hundred and three in one month. That's a hundred and nineteen percent. Do you know who's going to pay this? My tenants making minimum wage because in three years, their rent's going up now. You're not going to hurt me, you're going to hurt my tenants. And when they can't pay the rent and they have to go find another place to live, which they're not going to because they can't afford anything in this city at minimum wage, I'm going to go ahead and become one of those people. And I'm going to rent that duplex out for sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars now. You're not hurting me, you're hurting the renters. I cannot believe that multifamily people like me, three people, we pay, I pay water for three people, me on one side, the two kids on the other. And this is what my increase went to? I mean, we are talking forty-seven to a hundred and, a fifty-six dollar increase in one month for sewer alone. My water bill is under twenty dollars a month. This is ridiculous. And I agree with Greg one hundred percent. Basically, with everything going up, gas prices more than, I mean, we're a dollar more than what we were a few years ago. Food prices going through the roof, cost of living going through the roof, and you're going to throw this on me and all of these other people? A hundred and nineteen percent increase in one month is unacceptable. This is not the way you do things, and this is not fair. And I agree with Greg one hundred percent. This needs to be shelved until the numbers can really get straightened out. Twenty-five percent difference, nobody really knows what's going on? Hello? This is basic math. It's not hard. And I think what everybody is saying is right. What you use, you pay for it. If you're not there, you don't pay for it. We shouldn't be paying this kind of an increase in one month. This is a huge hit to me. Okay? I'm a business owner, I do my best to survive. It's rough right now. This kind of increase is simply not acceptable. And you guys need to understand, and Nancy gets it. Thank you. I hope you run for mayor someday. The tenants, the tenants, and the people that are not homeowners are going to be the ones who suffer the most because the rent is going to go up. How much more can it go up in our city right now? I mean, they're renting apartments that are five hundred square feet for almost two thousand dollars a month, and they're getting it. So my kids, their rent's going up, starting December first, right before Christmas. I request, just like Greg, that this be put on hold until something correct, something that makes sense is put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the conference session. Would anyone else like to address city council on this matter? Just take away the podium and state your name for the record.
I was just kind of thinking a little bit. Uh, if the house is on the golf course. Wait a minute. He said, I bought a house, and I don't have to pay any more money than what that guy, the condo pays. That doesn't make any sense. That's not fair. If you want to go buy a car, you want to buy a Mercedes, you want to buy a Dodge, you want to buy a Honda, you have that choice. But it depends also what you can afford. I could have afforded a house, but the concept, no maintenance, everything done. I got a single bill. That's why we moved into a condo.
Thank you.
Let me thank Greg Logan again. Hopefully the mic doesn't break this stuff. Because I was going to talk about all this stuff. I'd like to just echo what everybody else has said around here about the rates going up for the people who really can't afford it or can't afford it or just happen to be living in a condo. I was going to talk about the extra items you put into the, that was presented to the, the county. Things like in appendix B, furniture, fifty-five thousand dollars for new furniture this year attached to the water. There are all kinds of things in there, just pork belly stuff. Now, what I'd like to do is, can we get the sample bill and staple it up? The very last page.
Can you copy to the microphone?
Can we get the sample bill? Okay, yeah. That's the last page of your, your.
There's one, ten thousand dollars is not for us. You want to afford that many dollars?
Okay, I, I understand. So I want to point out something to you. You have a base charge in new charges. Base charge was three hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-four cents. Your water usage charge was five hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Water irrigation charge was three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four seventy. Now that water irrigation charge doesn't go back into the sewer. And your sewer rate is a difference at, is charged at, uh, for, sewer charge is two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Twice as much as the water going in for regular usage, excluding irrigation. Now, irrigation is not going back into the sewer system. Why are you charging twice as much for the water being used inside the house in your sewer? I mean, if I pump a hundred gallons in my house, I can't flush out two hundred gallons. There's no way. So by your own statistics, this is a fraud. It's just absolutely imbecile to go on with this. And I agree, this whole, this whole new plan should just be put on the table until you can get your heads around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Russ Burrows. I live on the south side. We live in a single-family residence, and we have never had only five hundred cubic feet of water. So when you guys say we're not paying our fair share as a homeowner, we are paying the most, uh, everybody on this page. And I suppose people in this room may know somebody who's a snowbird, who lives in a home. They also have to pay when they're not here. Uh, some people have vacation homes, they also have to pay when they're not here. So why is it unfair to everybody else to pay the same? That's what I'm asking. To me, we're not here all the time. We're here full-time now, but we weren't. We should be able to pay the same as everybody else. That's why I say.
Thank you.
My name is John McIlroy. I'm speaking in behalf of Los Lobos Vista's. And I had an opportunity to talk to all of you on October twelfth when I talked at the public speaking. Uh, our complex is a large complex. We have two hundred and twenty-four units. We also have seven villas. And our water bill and our sewage rates increased by, by approximately sixteen thousand dollars. We purchased a water meter, a system's water meter for eighteen thousand dollars, and we had it calibrated to the city compliance. So you know exactly what comes in our place and what goes out of our place. Our HOA maintains all the pipes and everything on our complex. It's private, at no cost to the city. Unfortunately, we're having these increases for the fixed rates on each place, which went up approximately eleven thousand dollars. I'm asking you to consider going to a flat rate, what we use, and what we, to spend some, be at that rate. You can calculate our bill and maintain compliance for property billing. I'm just asking you to reconsider, place everything on hold, and take a look at, uh, these new rates. They're outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make it quick. I'm Larry After, Cell Point Condominiums. I've lived there for thirteen years. Um, I just have a question, I think, for Mr. Lane.
Oh, okay. A question for you because you seem to know about the infrastructure. Um, when this was all put in place, the rates were set up for a reason. Um, residential's were higher evidently, and now you're trying to get everything even. What was the reason it was put in place to begin with that multifamily homes and condominiums were put at a lesser rate, a base rate than residences? And now you're trying to even that out. But what was the reasoning initially for that? Yeah, Mr. Cootson, do you want to take that?
Hey, Mayor. Um, for my time, not before a lot of the councilor's time, except for a few exceptions here. Um, but in terms of the, uh, the conversations that, uh, that take place about the, uh, less volume of water that gets utilized, uh, costs the city less to, uh, to supply the infrastructure needed to deliver that water and, and, and then get rid of the sewer system. So some of that thought was, was in place at, at that time. Um, we still have several hundred miles of, of water, I mean, we have several hundred, uh, miles of sewer main that must remain in place that the city spends money on, uh, to ensure that the infrastructure, infrastructure is there when that water gets flushed, whether it's once a day or once a month. Uh, we still have the same amount of infrastructure that's in place. Uh, the millions of dollars we spend on our water tanks to ensure that, that the water tanks are there so when the water gets utilized, um, it's not any less expensive for the, for the city to, uh, to supply the infrastructure, maintain the infrastructure, what, whether the, uh, the, uh, whether it's one flush a day, or one, or one flush a, one flush a month. So that was some of the, the thought patterns in the, in the past in terms of what that looked like. But I put a, I put a stress on, on the single-family homes. Um, in addition to that, there were, we, uh, we had, uh, what was called winter quarter averaging. That was previously in, in place for, for Lake Havissey City. So it was a very tough situation for staff to describe what was happening when a resident contacted the city and say, why is my sewer bill so high, uh, throughout the, uh, throughout the twelve, uh, throughout a twelve-month period when I wasn't in the house last, last month, or I used maybe, uh, a, a couple hundred cubic feet of water, uh, last month? That's because through winter quarter averaging, something that, that went away with, with the, the new plan that went forward, is those sewer rates were determined, uh, based on your usage for January, February, March, April, uh, for that quarter. And then we take the high, uh, out of the bill and the low out of the bill, and then that average right there would determine your sewer rates, no matter how you use the water throughout the, the course of the, of the, of the year. Uh, but obviously, for those that aren't in, in habits of utilizing water, um, they want for that first quarter, after every year, an impact on, on, on the balance of the last season and so forth. So a little bit of, of, uh, just trying to put it out there and just trying to look at it from the perspective of, of the city trying to provide the infrastructure, the equipment, the personnel, the tools to operate a, a water system and operate a sewer system. I'll be more than what you wanted to know, but hopefully that was helpful.
Well, I just, the part I was making that this, it was put in place for a, a reason at the beginning. And now, all of a sudden, it's got to change now to make it all equal. And our rates tripled last month.
Thank you. Yeah. Hi. Good evening, the state's name for the record.
Hi. My name is Reedette Jackson. I only have one question. I've been looking at all of this paperwork, and what stands out to me is I do not understand how hotel motel can get such a low cost of service. It makes no sense to me. Now, they're, they share a lot of common elements with the apartments and condos. Um, and yet their per room, the minimum over is seventeen eighty-seven. I just think that's something that needs to be looked into. It doesn't at all seem adequate.
Thank you. Is that something we could address for cost of service delivery? Um, and how put the different categories? Uh, you talked earlier about the cost of service delivery, uh, but how it was determined between hotels, multifamily, single-family? Or Kevin, sorry?
Yeah.
Yes?
No problem. Yeah, so when we did the, the cost of service analysis, so there are, there's three pieces that, that go into it. Four pieces. Um, it's looking at the volume of flow itself, so how much flow is being discharged by each of those development types? And then the strength factors that have been going around, the BOB and the TSS. So depending upon, um, the type of development, a restaurant's going to have a higher BOB and TSS than a bookstore is. Um, they talk about residential is generally on the lower end. So all of those factors go into our analysis. So when we're building the cost of service, we look at, um, the number of customers in that particular category. We multiply the number of customers by, um, the cost that we've calculated to issue a bill, to ring, to maintain meters on the water side, to do customer service. That's one cost. So that gets multiplied by the number of customers in that customer category. That gives us a cost of that piece for that customer. Then we look at the flow piece of it. We say, how much flow is coming from that particular customer class? We multiply that flow by the unit cost for one hundred cubic feet of, of flow. That's their flow-related charge associated with that customer class. Then we look at the BOB. So the BOB and the TSS, that's going to change by customer class based on the different strength factors. So as I said, a restaurant's going to have a higher strength cost than a, than a single family is or a multifamily. So we look at what the cost to treat one pound of BOB is. BOD is multiplied by the number of pounds that are produced by that customer class. That tells us how much it costs to serve that customer class to treat their BOB. The same thing with the TSS. What does it cost us to treat a pound of TSS? How many pounds is that customer class producing? Multiply the two together, that's what the total cost to treat that kid. So when we take all those four components together, that tells us how much it costs to serve a hotel. How much does it cost to provide service to the residential class? How much does it cost to provide service to a restaurant? The next step, as Pat was talking about, is, once we know how much we have to get from that particular customer class, how much are we getting from the flow component? How much are we getting it from the base charge? So that's the other piece that we're looking at there. So the cost of service is how much does it cost to treat, to provide those four different levels of service? If that answers your question?
Yeah. Yeah. You have a question?
Sorry. There were several meetings back that somebody came up, called the public, and I thought they made a really good point. And to make it more realistic for our citizens, if hotels would actually be at a higher rate, which obviously we know what happens, that goes to our tourists. So then the tourists end up having to pay for some of our infrastructure as well because we know that they're using our roads and our highways. And how can we redirect some of these fees onto the hotels? Obviously not bars and restaurants. I wouldn't touch that with a ten-foot pole because they bring in so many extra revenues as well. And I know that the hotels bring us revenues, but I was at, in Phoenix, and just to park my car costs thirty-three dollars for the night. So how can we make, here's another conversation. How can we maybe, um, look at those hotels in a different light with the intent of getting the funds from tourist dollars?
Thank you. Would, sir? Yeah, you have to state your name for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Don McPherson. I'm president of the HOA Village Park Condominiums. Um, something that hasn't been talked about by many of the public speakers up here is the fact that an HOA needs a two-thirds vote of their residents, owners, in order to pass any significant increase. Uh, at the Village Park, we just passed a thirty-dollar increase this past year. We have thirty units. It took twenty-one votes. It took twenty-one votes to pass that. We only got twenty-one votes. There were nine who voted against it. And so passing a significant increase to cover our bills, for some places, might be impossible. And I'm speaking for our particular complex when I say that. So consider the difficulty when you're increasing our utilities the way you want. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Molly. Now I think everybody in this room's heard from me. I don't know if this is current cut. It appears to me that, more?
Screwed up.
It appears to me that there is a certain amount of cost for distribution. And like what was just said, you know, we've got a lot of that coming from grocery stores, bakeries, hotels, restaurants, and schools, which is something every person in this community needs. Every resident here uses it, and every tourist here uses it. So I think everyone can understand that. But the cost, if we are going to redistribute the cost for things we all use, it needs to be redistributed across the board for everyone who's here. That's my opinion. I'm a property manager here in town. I've got one unit specifically. It's twenty-seven, probably one-bedroom apartments mostly. We are using the water of eight houses, roughly. But we are paying for the water of twenty-seven houses. Our people are senior citizens. They work in the grocery stores, the hotels, the motels, every blue-collar. They need your help. And we're one person. We can absorb all of this in one block without any notice. So I do hope you shall just, I do hope we can come up with a solution. And I do hope that it is more fair and equitable across the board.
Thank you.
And your counsel, David Burnett. And I'm looking at page thirteen here and fourteen. And I see all the different graphs. But I see for the single-family home, it's the same price all the way across, fifty-nine dollars. And I'm just thinking, you know, I'm looking at the ones for the multifamily units, and they're all half of what we're paying for single-family. And with the new phased-in, they're not even paying as much as they were before, the previous. What's up with that? I mean, you know? Shouldn't they at least be paying what they were before the issues came in? What happened there? You know, like in the middle one there, you know, they're paying forty-one dollars. Now they're paying twenty-eight bucks. So, you know, how come we're paying so much for single-family and they aren't even carrying what they were? I mean, you know, that's a significant increase from what we used to pay. So why are we carrying the load? I'm just wondering. And as far as the overall value, I don't know how that works. But I really think somebody ought to put the brakes on this and go over the major budget and find out how much it really is going to cost and how much you really need to complete this program. And maybe have another consultant look at this and see what it really takes and how much it's really going to cost, and then split the value. And then we have to go like a three-tiered thing. And maybe the homeowners groups need to have each individual people pay their own bill instead of putting it on the HOA. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jack Iverson, and I'm for Los Padres Business. And I just wanted to piggyback on what John shared with you. Yes, it used to be an averaging of January, February, and March, I believe it was, the first quarter of each year to determine the sewer, well, the peak periods for rates. We and the city worked out an agreement that we would put in a sewer meter at a cost of eighteen thousand dollars. And it's calibrated to city standards once or twice a year. They'll just give a call and say, we need to recalibrate. They come in and recalibrate. There's not a mystery about how much sewerage we're putting into the system. All of our sewer is generated by, like we said, two-hundred-and-twenty-four condo units. And those are not occupied seventy percent of the year. Seventy percent of the year, seventy, during five months out of the year, five to six months out of the year, seventy percent of our condominiums are empty. So we have a meter that tells us how much we're putting into the sewer. It's not a mystery. It's not a mystery of how much we're putting in. It's when we maintain, as John said, we maintain all of our sewer lines, all of our water lines within our complex. When it goes off the front gate on the Caboose Boulevard into the sewer, or the water comes in from the Caboose Boulevard, we know by the meters how much water we are operating in and how much sewerage we're putting into the sewer. And that, we always felt, was a very, very fair way of determining how much sewer rates are, or how much we're paying for sewer. And that, that's, you know, that to us is a fair and equitable way of determining rates. And that's because, and that's why we put in that sewer meter to get with. Yes.
I have a question. Do you have a bill in print?
No, I don't.
Okay. Because I was going to ask you. I remember seeing your bill, but I can't remember what it was.
I'm just saying that.
On average, what is your sewer, what do you use on average for your sewer? Cubic?
What we, what we have been paying in the past is ten dollars and fifty-one cents per cubic foot. That's what we were paying.
Okay.
All right. Now it's up to forty, it's up to fifty-five. This next year, it's going to be phased into twenty-eight.
Yeah. Tell me what your sewer meter is rating for all your complexes. I want to show that number. Yes. Because again, the wonderful thing about the sewer meters, they're really after it. Yeah, how many cubic feet?
Can I bring it to you?
Yes, please.
Is our previous bill?
Yeah, I know I've seen all these. I know I've seen them. Here we go. All right. So basically, what it says sewer flow right now for them is twenty-three thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven. So twenty-three thousand divided by two units? Two-hundred-and-twenty-four. So approximately hundred cubic sewer is what they're using. They're not using five-hundred-and-sixty-seven cubic. So, and that is their previous bill, which was, for sewer charges, was two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-six. The current bill that I'm looking at, it's actually a little bit higher cubic, but takes it to thirty-six, that thirty-six thousand cubic. So that's three-hundred-and-sixty, three-hundred-and-sixty. So you're talking at one-hundred-and-twenty per unit. But sorry to say, their sewer charge went to thirteen thousand dollars.
And as I stated, you know, what is concerning to us also, not only the rate increase, but the rate increase assumes that those condo units are going to be occupied during the year. And they aren't. Five to six months out of the year, seventy percent of them are empty. They're empty. We don't go put anything in the sewer whatsoever. And that's what that sewer meter is all about. It's not only taking care of not having to average and having actual sewer figures for you, but being able to document how much sewer we're putting in the sewer system.
And if you were getting your winter averaging in January, February, and March, that's when your winter visitors were there. So throughout the rest of the year, when nobody was there, you were paying at a higher rate. That's what it seems like to me.
That's right.
And in most cases, in July and August, we're spending more money on water. But thank you so much for your information. I really appreciate this. I hope everybody here is understanding the direness of this.
Yeah. I think, you know, once again, I just want to just come back to the whole issue of fairness, of what we're putting into the system. Please don't charge us for things, for sewerage we're not putting into the system. If I'm putting into the system, if someone said, well, everybody ought to be charged individually, we're just not set up. We're set up with one meter for water, one meter for sewerage going out. And by the regulations that govern that sewer meter, it's recalibrated by the city, by our city, to make sure that it's accurate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello and good evening. My name's Todd Poulsen. I'm not going to be redundant in voicing my opposition to the rate structure that went into effect July one. I think it's been well-versed here. So my question, I guess, is, as many are asking to have this resolution tabled or no vote, what are the assurances that it gets revisited? To me, there are no assurances that it will be revisited. Second part is, if this resolution passes, is it not eligible to be revisited?
You know, we can revisit it at another time, for sure. But what we have in front of us today is trying to address the argument.
So if this passes, it would conceivably provide short-term relief? And it could go back and be revisited? Is that not better than it not passing and being revisited? I don't know.
Yeah, we'll have that discussion when we bring it back to council. Thank you.
My name's Tanner Wong. I live in the apartment on Swanson. I was just wondering if, like, was any thought put into, like, when they raise rates for the multifamily units? Like, what? It sounds like the vast majority of these multifamily units are used for snowbirds coming down, or the air cat the earth. And then, like, our low-income residents, who are, they can't afford to live in that house. They can't afford to deal with doubling of this rate. Like, we have people who barely get by as it is. And here you are hitting, I mean, yeah, it's one thing, yeah, rent's going to go up. That sucks. Like, I just don't understand why people think that it's equitable that here is like a multifamily unit, like here an apartment, like, oh, yeah, sure. Now we're paying the same as a single-family residential unit. Okay, well, my first apartment, I moved in here, when I moved down to Caboose, it had two sinks and a toilet and a barely working shower. There's no longer, there's no longer a unit. But now I'm suddenly put on the same level as the house I'm looking at. Multiple bathrooms, multiple showers and baths, laundry rooms inside the residence. Like, why are we considered, like, these multifamily units, like, as the lowest, basically bottom of the barrel in this town, unfortunately? Why are we put on the same level as these big, huge, beautiful houses on the hill? Yeah, sure, we're paying our fair share. But when you look at, like, what's equitable, like, percentage-wise, we're paying way more compared to what we can actually afford. I was just wondering if there's any thought else put into that? How it's going to impact our low-income residents? Because I know, as I've already mentioned multiple times, the people who are managing these apartments, they're not going to just take the hit. They're going to raise the rent, and it's going to impact the people who are the most worked off, like especially given this last year. Like, was there any thought else put into that?
Yeah, during our public hearings, we had lots of conversation about what was going to be good for our senior citizens, for our low-income. And out of the options that were there, we actually went and changed from SAF recommendation at the time, so what is the lowest price that is going to pay in those situations? So there was a lot of conversation. This, it was a nine-month process, and we talked about it in multiple public hearings. We had outreach to the aquatic center, we had meetings here, discussing the different options with a variety of different citizens that are engaged in that process.
But like, when you look at the numbers, though, our rates, like, aren't doubling. Like, sure, I don't know. I just, I just don't understand how that was even allowed to happen? How, okay, just at the drop of a hat, we're probably going to be forced to, like, they're going to be forced to, oh, it's going to be passed on to the, to the low-income folks. That's all I got, I think. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary D. Heisen. I'm representing Kingsbury Resort Condoms. I agree with, we would like to also ask the this be tabled that we looked at. But as long as you're going to be looking at it, our last three bills have come with different rate classes, have come with no readings on our meters. We have one that said we were residential, one that says we were commercial, one that says we're a condo. And when we called to talk to the water department, nobody knows what, why, or who we could talk to about this. So as you're looking at it, could you find out why the bills are coming in different every month? Also, why, one month, the sewer's on top, then it's the water. So then you got to go make sure you go through and you're comparing all these things. It's very, they've been, you know, they've been wrong. So now we have no idea what we were actually being charged because it doesn't tell you the exact rate. It just tells you your rate class. So is there someone within the city or the water department that we can bring these bills to, to have them reviewed, to find out what they, what we were actually charged? And?
Yes, we can do that. Mr. Stevens, if you want to show it.
But I was surprised that when we called the office, and we had the hold for a long time, that the person we spoke to was unaware, and their response was, well, I've only been here a short time, so this happened before I came on board. And we said, well, is there someone else we could talk to? And we weren't given any answer at all.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that. For, what new rates are implemented, they're implemented across the entire city. So there's so many of them. And so if some errors were, did occur, it sounds like that was the case in your situation. So I'm sorry for that. But we definitely can make it right, get you the right information, and ensure that you're being built the correct way of the intent of what the council with the rate study. So I'm sorry to look through that, but I'm just looking to be able to assist you with that.
As long as you're looking.
Yeah, thank you. No, great point. We appreciate it. Hi.
My name is Gary Haden. Myself and my wife, resident at Campbell Cootie RV Resort. And thank you, Nancy Campbell, for doing well. We appreciate that. Haven't studied it a lot. Studied it more after I got my first bill after the increase. Two-hundred-and-forty percent, twenty-five-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars increase on my first bill. Then I look at my home first bill, and it's an eight-dollar increase. Sounds more likely. So to me, the problem, at least as far as the RV resorts, seem to be occupancy. If you're going to have a minimum charge, then it needs to be based on our occupancy. And obviously, in Haboose, RV business is seasonal. We have winter visitors, and we have a few people come down on the summer. So please take that into consideration when you're figuring out the final, you know, whether you're going to vote and phase it in over five years, that would at least keep us in business. But I think it should be tabled and studied a little further and add up a more equitable solution overall. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready to close the public hearing, bring it back to council. All right, we're going to close the public hearing. We did have several citizens write in as well, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Williams through those into the record. Uh, we did have several citizens write in as well, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Williams through those into the record.
Number seven was received on Tuesday, October 26th, with the subject line of "Council Leaving 10/26/21 at 8:06." Honorable Mayor and City Council members, for the past five years, I have lived in a single-family home in Lake Havasu City. My water, sewer, and trash bill has averaged eighty-two dollars with a minimum of forty-one for sewer. During this time, the multifamily unit was paying twenty-three dollars fifty cents minimum for sewer. I'm a single parent, my household consists of my son and myself. My household's domestic water use cannot be any more than a couple or family that lives in an apartment, condominium, or any other type of multifamily unit. So why were they receiving such a large discount? Why did you or past councils ask me to subsidize their use through my rate? I believe the goal of the new rates was to make rates equitable to all users. The new sewer rates are minimum rate of fifty-two dollars fourteen cents per single-family home and forty-eight dollars sixty-seven cents per apartment or condominium unit. In addition, the new water rates are one dollar seventy-four per cubic foot per single-family home and one dollar forty-seven cents per cubic foot for the multifamily units. These rates seem comparable on both sewer and water, in fact, the multifamily units are still receiving a discount. If the multifamily structures and assets equitable rates for similar use, the rest of us will continue to subsidize the multifamily units. I ask that you set rates based on use and connection. The multifamily u- unit new rates are reasonable and equitable when compared to like-used single-family homes. The same population, individuals, seniors, single parents, winter residents, weekend visitors, and families that live in both single-family homes and multi-unit properties. I ask you to represent all utility users and base the rates on the merits of fairness for the services rendered. Submitted by Trina Ware. The next comment was received on Tuesday, October 26th, with the subject line of Public Hearing Agenda Item ID-21-3035, "Shishone Condominiums." After reading the article in today's News Herald, counsel to take another crack at sewer rates, I would like to comment about Mr. Kowalski's statement regarding the Lake Havasu IRR and drainage assessment. Shishone Condominiums is a four-unit HOA located on the south side of Lake Havasu City. The 2021 assessment for irrigation and drainage was one hundred-and-thirty-four dollars forty-four cents per unit, eleven dollars twenty cents per month per unit. The 2021 tax summary has a line item for state aid of one hundred-and-thirty-four dollars eighteen cents, which effectively wipes out the irrigation and drainage assessment. I do not believe that Mr. Kowalski's statement is accurate regarding the savings homeowners will see with that irrigation and drainage assessment being discontinued. I do think that the planned approach of raising rates over five years is flawed. It does not address the rate issue for multifamily units, it only postpones it. Every property type should be able to pay their fair share for water and sewer services. How did we get into this situation? The consultant made a serious error in regards to multifamily rates and should be held accountable. The entire rate structure needs to be reviewed. If the current rate structure is implemented over a five-year period, we will have to raise our monthly HOA dues. Currently, three of our four homeowners are retired and living on fixed incomes. Our fourth homeowner is planning on retiring in March of 2022. I would hope that City Council will take a different approach regarding this issue rather than the easy path to raising our sewer rates. Submitted by Victor Nicholson. The third comment was received on Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, with the subject line of ID-21-3035, "Water Rate Increase." Good morning, I am very concerned about the new rates for water and wastewater for apartments, condos, multifamily, and RV parks. I am a single woman, disabled, and a condo owner. The new rates are way out of line and will be forced to sell my condo full-time residence due to the price increase. Southwest Retreat will also have to pass the rate increase along to, to the condo owners, and I will be out of a home with no other homes or rentals that are affordable in the city of Lake Havasu. I hope you can reconsider the outrageous rate increase. Submitted by Jan Eleo. Next comment was received on Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, with the subject line of Resolution 21-3543. Council members, please approve Resolution 21-3543 regarding the deduction of the sewer rate for multifamily units. This will be a relief for homeowners in Lake Havasu. Unfortunately, there is a second problem that was not addressed. The sewer cap was not reduced, leading us with an inflated sewer cost. The sewer cap and sewer rates are different. The sewer cap limits the maximum amount the city can charge for sewer. The cap for multifamily units rose from thirty-three dollars ninety-five cents to sixty-four dollars thirty-two cents. As an example, Noddy Falls Estates had an old sewer cap of two-thousand-and-thirty-seven dollars. With today's resolution, our sewer cap will cost us three-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-nine dollars twenty cents, sixty-four dollars thirty-two per unit for sewer disposal. That is an eighty-nine percent increase. It should only be a thirty percent increase per year for the next ten years, according to Wilderness Water and Sewer Rate Study that was presented to the council. Please make changes to the sewer cap. Submitted by Rick Ortiz. The last comment was received on Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, with the subject line of Sewer Rate Adjustments. I just read the adjustments to be made on the sewer rates for multifamily homes, et cetera, with an increase over a five-year period, but the rates will remain the same, single-family homes and commercial. That is very unfair, it should be adjusted across the board for all. Except sewer, we have small business over sewer rate went from eighty-six dollars a month to four-hundred-twenty-five dollars. That is an increase, is quite an increase, wouldn't you say? It's a discrimination to do it for some but not for others. We will continue to pursue this issue as times right now are hard on everyone, and this is totally out of line. Submitted by Richard Clark.
Thank you. House member Dolan, did you want to take it from, uh, as we get back to council?
Okay, so I have some thoughts and some notes. And while I'm not a doctor, I do write like one, so we're gonna kind of sort of do some of this. Um, there's, there's a lot going on. Um, I think the biggest thing we have to bobby up is, is revenue. We're gonna have to see what revenue... We either have two problems. Nancy's correct, we're bringing in way too much money. Um, we're gonna have, we're gonna have way too much money in the coffers at the end of the year because we miscalculated. And then we don't have to do any rates in the future because we're miscalculated. Hope that's the case, I, I hope we can go over the numbers and find out that's not the case. Um, the more concerning issue is, is we, we are where we are, and the revenues need to be what they're at. And while we lower it for some people, we're gonna have to increase for others. We're gonna have to, we need to spend, was it... If we need to spend X, we need to spread it out to everybody. So, there's gonna be people that think it's fair and those that don't think it's fair. Um, we have a room of people right now that are condo users, and I, you know, we're definitely, you know, creatures of the choir in some areas, but you, I definitely feel like you guys are the most affected right now. It's, you know, I, my, my rates at the gas station, I think they went from like one-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred, so I doubled. But, you know, I mean, I can also, that's the cost of the business, I can pass that on. Um, I think we do need to be realistic about this. Um, I do think in the long run, we need to make it so that it is fair, it is across the board, but we... To pass it on, to double, triple these bills, I, when they were, you know, they were paying eleven-fifty to go to forty-four, yes, we can have that conversation, it's fair, they need to pay more, but if we're gonna bankrupt these HOAs and they physically cannot connect, collect that money... I mean, I think we need to get it to that point where they, they can do that. But I think we also need to be realistic, we're seeing hyperinflation everywhere right now, everything's going up. We're talking about maintaining our systems, everything's gonna be going up. So, I do feel that the rates are going up, but they're gonna go up, internet's gonna go up, everything's going up. So, um, you know, like I said, I, I hope we're, you know, I hope you're right, that we're raising too much money. And, but if, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a yearly review, as we look at next year's rates. If, if we do have more than we collected, then we don't need to raise rates, or we can lower rates. But, and I think the emergency issue right now is we do need to make this adjustment, so we can get the multi-family homes in place. And, you know, Austin said, you know, there's a gotcha approach to this meeting, I, I just, I don't like, I don't like the gotcha, I don't like the, you know, there's something wrong, and we're gonna find it. Hey, we, we've had public meetings, I mean, where were the HOAs to come in and say, hey, you're gonna go from eleven, we're gonna go from eleven dollars to forty-four dollars? Uh, I remember the meeting, we did talk about it. We, we were concerned about our, um, our lower-income families to be able to afford the bills, and that's what we talked about. We, we, uh, we did focus on more single-family at the time. I think we all didn't really, even though we saw the numbers of multifamily, we didn't look at it that way. We were so focused on a single-family of option A and option B, and, and they were looking right at us, we were from eleven to forty-four dollars, or we were twenty-two dollars to forty-four dollars, I don't think we saw that, and I think that is something we need to fix. But I think these HOAs need time to absorb it, if it's a five percent, maybe we need to get it down to that level and give them the few years to do it. But the shocks, the shock value is there, I think we, we, we do need to, to get everybody to that level, but I do think it's unfair to put them in that situation where they, you know, we can drop it twenty bucks, but they still physically can't do that, because they can't collect that. Um, you know, we, I think we need to adjust that. It is an emergency situation, so we can make changes to it tonight. Um, we can, we can lower the rates, we can't increase the rates. If we want to increase the rates, I'm a lawyer, but I know there's different procedures, we have to go through sixty days and all that. So, I'm, I'm also not a huge fan of, you know, I would say completely shuttling this, as some people have said. Um, I, I think there's adjustments that need to be made, and I think maybe we can make it right now for multifamily, but we can also come back and revisit. I like the fact that this does retroactively go back to July 1st, and there'll be credits, and there'll be adjustments. Um, maybe, you know, I just think the meeting maybe got away from us a little bit, and, um, I think maybe we need to calmly look at some of the, the ways to solve it. Um, I, I think the RV, RV occupancy is definitely something we need to look at. Uh, maybe it's not something that we do right this second, or maybe it's something we can lower, you know, maybe we can lower their rates right now, and then between now and next year, when we look at the increases, we do consider something like that. But I think we have to be realistic to the RV parks and the multifamily homes, they literally just, they, they, they can't do this. And, and I, and I was all these public meetings, too, and multifamily never really, really, really came up. We didn't really dig into it like we did, we dug in with multifamily. Tried to dial it in, and I had my parents' bill, and they, you know, they lived in the house that I was born in, you know, and they, they... He knows his bill, and he can hit this every time I go home, you know, it was up this much, and I was on sewer from the beginning. You know, so, you know, I compared them to what the other families were at, and, and, and we got an issue where we have, you know, eighty-five percent of these apartments are not occupied, occupied year-round. Well, I think that's great, but if they're second homes, they're second homes, it's the cost of, you know, living in a second home. I, you know, I don't think it's fair, those of us that do live here year-round, need, need to pay for that. I don't think it's fair for you condo owners that are here year-round as well, you know, for the same impact of the system. So, maybe now that we brought it back to council, um, maybe we can discuss those actual rates, 'cause I do, I do think we need to do something, and I think, you know, I think this was a good recommendation by staff to start with. Um, I... Apartments were, condos were, what, they were eleven, eleven-fifty? Um, the only thing we took, apartments, there's somewhere in the reason, we doubled. Apartments were paying twenty-two dollars. So, yeah, but that, but that is an issue, so, but... Also, too, the, the sewer, the one thing I don't like about this, the sewer cap rates for residential is fifty-six, and for apartments and condos are sixty-four. Uh, flow rates are six-point-six, we are... So I, I do think we need to pump the brakes a little bit on the multifamily, back it down to a realistic number that we can give that time, and then, like I said, in the next seven months, we come out of the rule next year. I think they need to go back to their, to their boards and tell them, we're gonna have to get everyone together to vote on this, because we are gonna be seeing some big increases, and we've been very, very lucky that we've been paying what we've been paying all these years, but it, I'm afraid it's gonna go up, I mean, eleven dollars, yes, I don't think apartments and condos are, are, you know, the same as a house, but I don't think they're twenty-five percent of the house. And like I said, my parents' house versus my house, you know, you know, I'm capped out at fifty-six, fifty-four, while my parents are paying fifty-two dollars. I'm paying four dollars more, and I have two teenagers that don't apparently know how to turn off the shower most of the time, so. Um, so like I said, maybe we can bring this back to council and, and, and kind of maybe be realistic and, and lower that number to a point where it is something that's manageable. And then we can revisit it in a few months, uh, we can also revisit it next year, but this is also what we do. We fix things as they come up, and we make adjustments, and we can do another emergency one that makes adjustments if, you know, 'cause that, we can sit... 'Cause that one question the city manager is, what's our revenues? If our revenues are just off the charts, then we made a mistake. It's also still a little too early to see that, but, you know, within a couple of quarters, we should be able to see that, and we can make adjustments. But I, I think we need to, we can't be doubling and tripling people's bills. It's, I, I think we, we need to fix the multifamily right now, um, and, and do it calmly and realistically.
Thank you. So, I'll be real quick, I, I don't like this phase, you know, I shouldn't get to that conversation in five years, in five years, so it's really quick. And, um, I'm not usually a supporter of consultants, but I do think they did the job we asked them to do. I think that how we digested that information as a council, I, I'll admit, I was wrong. I, I was wrong, I, I think that if we would have given this sheet during the explanation, then we would have different votes from your council. But we, I didn't see this, I mean, we saw the numbers, but we didn't see the actual, I didn't tell you saw this. Looking at increases of three-hundred-seventy-one percent, I don't know, two percent, as soon as I thought I saw that actual number, I would have really looked more into it. Um, and I'm, I'm a restaurant owner, and I took a thirty-three percent decrease, well... I could afford to stay where I was, and I would have seen a lot of these ones that took decreases, like, uh, hotels, you have certain ones that took, you know, not big decreases, but they took decreases, but... If I would have saw this sheet, I would have seen it would have been a different decision. So I will admit, as a council member, I made a mistake. I did not, um, look into it as much as I should have. So I want to end up after my progress, and I will be believing more on this, I think we need to hear about it, I think these people back. But that can easily... I'm sorry, you're already discussing this again.
To answer the question, why the apartments are at twenty-three and the condos are eleven, is because when we put the IDB money into place, it actually is per parcel. So a whole apartment complex is only getting, if it's on a two-acre parcel, it's only getting charged maybe, do the math, five-hundred dollars. The difference with condos, each parcel was charged the IDB money of one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. So the original rate study took that into place, so a five-hundred square foot unit was getting hit for one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars a year, which is approximately eleven dollars. Okay, so that's where we got the difference on that. And as for the rate study, like I said before, all other classes stay the same, and you guys are looking at it as well. This is the, the sewer rate in front of us. And why I didn't understand it is because my, I have a sewer meter as well as every, several people. Spent all that money, we calibrated it, we know exactly what goes in, we know exactly what goes out. Ours was based on the exact flow rate, and our flow rate is seven dollars and thirty cents. Think about that, if you think that's really, that's, that's pretty high. So we were getting charged exactly seven dollars and thirty cents per the exact amount of flow that was coming out of our sewer. So when I saw the rate study, and, and again, I'll take, I, I feel like Michelle, if I made a mistake, I'll admit it, I'll made, made a mistake. Um, but again, when you get a rate study, you should see the good, the bad, and the ugly. And if I saw the five-hundred square, you know, of these numbers, those are the ugly. And I remember, uh, council member Dolan and I, we were like Einstein's over there trying to figure out everybody's info, uh, numbers to make sure it was right for you guys. But as I'm looking through the categories for sewer, it says residential, option A, B, B, so condos, bars, whatever. When you get down to where it says, um, hotels, it says, next to it, per room. When you get to RV parks, it says, per space. So when I was looking at this, because I did the numbers, and if I took my seven dollars and thirty cents and I divided it into the actual flow of my sewer, it was the right amount with an additional eleven dollars and twenty cents. So as the lady in here said, and I was going to bring that up, and I forgot to say that, these water, uh, invoices that we receive shouldn't be this diffi- I mean, the sewer shouldn't be this difficult. Water is easy, we have a six-inch meter, we went from one-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars to three-hundred dollars for a six-inch meter. Here's our flow rates, they're high. We get it, there it is, clear of the day. But when we got into the sewer, and as you know, everybody in here knows how many of your invoices I've dug through, will tell you, they are all over the place. It, it, it was unbelievable what I was finding. From the sewer rates to the irrigation meters to this, it wasn't, it wasn't easy to read. And if I sent that out to a customer mine and told them, that's what you're gonna get charged, and that's what your rate's gonna be, um, it would be devastating. They, they would be, I just can't, you know, make up stuff. They, they would be, I just can't, you know, make up stuff and, and make it really uncomplicated when I'm sending somebody an invoice, and that's the way I feel. So through this whole process, I, I am going to be, I would like to see a motion to stop this and table this and do what's absolutely right. We didn't need to do this until July first, and our IDD fund is sitting with forty-four million dollars in it to start. So obviously, we weren't going broke. And, uh, I told you about our savings account, all these things. So we need to just stop and do this right, and then at the end, if we can actually really clean up the bills for everybody, so they know exactly, including the council up here, what the bill looked like in front of me. And I think you guys all know where I stand, and this is a call to a public, and look at everybody's here doing their job, and the majority of you, I think, agree with me.
So first of all, thank you guys for being here, um, withstanding time. Unfortunately, I wish a lot of you, as I've talked to people out and about, we've talked about this for months, and it's sad that it takes a change in the bill that you get, and then you wanna come and talk about it, and I'm glad that you wanna talk about it, but I wish you would have been here when we had public hearings so that you guys could bring up your concerns and voice your opinions then, so we don't have bad bills going out, and then we have to go back and try to change them, and then you guys have disgruntled people concerned with their bills. And so I just, sometimes, and I, it, this is not the only issue this ever happens with, so it's not like I'm singling a specific issue out. It's just that that seems like the only time that people get really concerned is when all of a sudden it affects them in an adverse way, and then it's, it's reactive instead of proactive. And I'd like to be proactive on things. Um, again, there's, there is the concern that the, the cost of your condo or apartment or whatever, it's gonna cost the same to maintain the pipes to the, in the service for one month or twelve months, whether you're there. Um, you know, we discussed this, we tried to make it a fair model. Um, I get that the rates went higher than everybody thought that they would. Uh, it said what they would be on the study that we got, I was just looking at it again. Um, so I guess I read this study different than everybody else, and there was nobody here saying anything any different. So I don't live in a multifamily facility. My parents have houses, so the studies I did, that I looked at their rates, they, I mean, I went through and did my due diligence on my end for, for my people, and nobody came to me with any concerns. So, I mean, I understand your concerns now, but now we've implemented this, and now we have to go back and try to fix it. So it's not an easy thing to do once it's already implemented, to go back and get everybody up here to agree on one specific thing. Uh, we did it once, and now we're gonna do it again. Um, again, council member Dolan said the same thing. I wish there would have been HOA representatives here to discuss this at our public meetings. Um, other than that, I don't have anything to repeat, other than what's kind of already been said. So those are the notes that I have that might have been just a little different.
Thank you. That was the last one, I said, thank you all for being here, we, we do appreciate the input. Um, I wanna answer, uh, a few of the questions that, that came up and, and, and make a, a few comments. Uh, when we talk about the replacement, the rates to replace the IDD, that is freshwater only, that has nothing to do with the sewer. The, the freshwater rates, the water that's coming in is what the IDD was about. So that's separate from the wastewater. So, uh, I don't wanna confuse those two. Um, so Greg, you talked about whether or not the information was, was given to us. I had the information. I'm not gonna say that the information wasn't given to me. The information was given to me. I have a fifty-nine page report where the information was given to me. I studied that report, um, so I, I will not pass the blame on to somebody else. I accept, uh, any responsibility that, uh, we as a council need to accept. Uh, this all lies on our shoulders, um, and nobody else's. We were given options, and this is the way we went. Um, when we talk about, uh, the gentleman talked about the milk, uh, that a dollar, if, if these people are paying the dollar for the milk, then these people should pay the dollar for the milk. That's exactly what it is that I'm trying to say. Everybody should pay a dollar for the milk. The difference is, the people that have been paying for a dollar for the milk for the last twenty years, some people have only been paying twenty-five cents. And so now everybody's coming up, so everybody has to pay that dollar for the milk. And how did this come about? The gentleman asked how this all came about. Like I said, when we first started, when we talked about the IDD, we knew the IDD was going to go away. The Irrigation Drainage District, what we used, that, uh, six point seven four million dollars, or somewhere around that area, that we used for the freshwater, since we knew that was going away, and we were gonna have to study the rates to make sure that we had enough freshwater, let's look at all of the water, the freshwater and the wastewater. And that's what we did, that's what our consultant did. They came in and they studied the entire system, freshwater and wastewater. And that was when we realized that there was disparity in the system. Some people were paying eleven dollars to flush their toilets and take their showers and do their dishes, and other people were paying fifty-five dollars. So when we looked at this, we said, you know what? That's not fair. We need to make it equitable across the board. A dollar for a gallon of milk, everybody pays a dollar for a gallon of milk. So that's how that came about, uh, to answer that question. Um, the other thing, the way this was figured out, our consultant said, okay, this is how much money that we're going to need every single year. It's for our debt service, for our maintenance costs, and our upgrading costs. This is what it's gonna cost. So in order to get that much money, we worked backwards from there, and that's how we came up with the rates. So that's, that's how that worked out. We, this is what we need, this is how we're gonna collect it. Um, then the other, uh, thing that's come up is, um, the, some of the units are only occupied part of the year. And it's the same whether you're in a condo, an apartment, a single-family residence. Some of them are, uh, here full-time, some of them are here part-time. But the system itself is twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, whether people are here or not. So that system is constantly having to be upgraded and, and maintained, whether somebody in this condo is using it, or somebody in this single-family residence is using it, or not using it. We still have to maintain that infrastructure. Uh, as I said earlier, the part that we didn't know, or at least I did not know, is that the people that live in multifamily residences, like the condo minions, did not pay their own utilities. And we've heard from you all now that this is gonna cause some bankruptcy, that, that this is gonna be very, very difficult for you all to be able to pay those bills. That's why we're here tonight, we brought this back. Now, we had come up with a way of using these Rescue Act funds. Uh, our city manager, our city attorney say that they believe legally we can use these funds to take care of the capital improvement projects, so that will release some of the funds, so we don't have to charge such high rates. So that is what, what is here tonight. We're gonna try to, to do that. Um, but is it fair to the people that have always been paying that dollar for the gallon of milk and are gonna continue to pay that dollar for that gallon of milk? But because we want to help the people that have these HOAs, we're now only gonna charge you sixty cents for that gallon of milk. Is that fair to everybody else? And that's what I think that other gentleman was trying to bring up. It's not fair, but we still need to help. As a society, we need to help those that need the help. We've been paying it, it's not like, uh, because we don't have these mon-, this money for these next five years, we're gonna have to, and people that live in single-family homes, they're gonna start paying a dollar fifty for the milk, so that the other people can only pay sixty cents for the milk. These Recovery Act dollars are gonna allow it, so that those of us that have been paying the dollar are still gonna pay a dollar. And you have to remember, uh, and I said this earlier, we represent fifty-seven thousand people in this town. Some of them live in condos, some of them live in apartments, and some of them live in single-family residences. Some of them live in RVs. We have to take into account, and we discussed it when we were up here, uh, what is gonna have the, the least amount of impact on our residents, those of you that own the system, because you own this water system? What's gonna have the least amount of impact on the most people? And so, and that's how we got where we are today. But I think that answered all the questions that people posed towards me and stuff. Thank you. Did you have a question? Did, did you want to?
All right, so, uh, we've, uh, heard from all of you, uh, we've, uh, heard from everyone in council. The, the one point I'll make on multifamily homes and condos is that we went through this study. I don't live in a multifamily, uh, this, uh, home or, uh, condo complex, but every other unit said, uh, per unit, per room, uh, per RV spot, condos just have the number. So I knew that there was an increase from, from ten dollars and fifty cents to forty-eight, sixty-seven. Uh, I knew percentage-wise, that's huge, but, you know, thirty-eight dollars divided by a hundred units, or forty units, or three units, is not that, that much of an impact to the citizen. So when it comes to that base charge, I didn't realize it was every single unit, and nowhere in the study indicated that that would be the case. Uh, I, I wouldn't have known that. So, uh, so I apologize for not asking the question, I just, I never lived and wanted to even go to the next step. Uh, now, on the condo side, there is going to be a hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-four cents, um, uh, benefit from not having the tax, the IDD tax going forward. Uh, for a single-family homes, it could be larger depending on your lot size. Uh, we have, uh, in front of us now, we have to make a decision. So if we don't do anything today, our citizens, uh, that are here today and have voiced their concerns are not gonna have any relief. And we've heard from the HOAs that they, they can't sustain it. They either have no CC hours, that they can't increase, uh, their rates, uh, more than five percent, or whatever it, uh, may be for their individual situations. Uh, we, we did this in the public. I don't want anyone to think that this was not done through a public process and public hearings and got feedback. Uh, and we actually had a lot of folks engaged in it. We were talking about it for, uh, nearly, uh, eighteen months, nine months with a consultant. Uh, they, they were talking about it, uh, all of the time, of what was happening with the IDD, and we looked at, provided different options of setting, uh, a district, or could we do another drainage district? And we found out legally you can't do that, state law changed, and we looked at lots of things and talked about it over and over again. So we have, uh, a staff recommendation that declares the emergency, so that makes it, that allows it to go into effect immediately and go retroactively, um, and with the wa-, uh, water and, uh, uh, rates and fees, with it going back, uh, twenty dollars for the apartments, uh, condos, multifamily, RV parks. But we've heard from several of these associations that that's still not sustainable, not, not doable, don't have that kind of money. Uh, so that's the staff recommendation, that's a motion that, that will be laid by a member of council. I would propose, uh, that, and if you guys want to, uh, council members, my colleagues, if you could follow on this, it's just a motion. Um, and I'll, I'll do just a motion here. Uh, but declaring an emergency, and maybe adopting the water and wastewater rates and fees with the following classifications, retroact-, retroactively till July first. Apartments would go, uh, to twenty-eight, sixty-seven, which is their current rate. Uh, that would be a four dollar and seventeen cent increase on the base rate from what they're paying now. Uh, condos would be at eighteen, sixty-seven. That would be, uh, an eight dollar and seventeen cent increase, they're at ten, fifteen, now they'd go to eighteen, sixty-seven. Multifamily, the same, eighteen, sixty-seven. Uh, and RV spaces would go, uh, to nine, thirty-four, which would be a four dollar, eighty-four cent, uh, increase. And then, um, multifamily, oh, excuse me, the single-family residence, which we're not talking about right now, just for the record, like forty-one dollars, uh, to, uh, forty-seven, ninety-seven. So it's about the same level of increase, if you will. The, 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 uh, difference is we would use additional ARPA dollars, so that would hinder a future decision of ours, um, on future, um, uh, ARPA dollars, uh, that we could use of that four point two million per year. So that basically would get a thirty-dollar, um, uh, decrease for the condos, um, the condos. It would be fifteen dollars for the RV parks, um, and the others staying the same. So, so those are two possible motions. Um, I, I, council member Dolan, I believe you have something you wanna say.
Yes, thank you. I do have a question. Uh, I, I, I do like those numbers, that's kind of the ballpark. I was thinking as well, because I think we're definitely gonna do something, I just have a question for the city ma-, city attorney. So hypothetically, if we were to make a motion and we, it doesn't pass, can we make a new motion with different changes to it? Okay, so that was one question I had. The other question, I, I, the sewer cap rate is still a concern to me. Um, if, you know, the sewer cap rates, eight dollars higher than a residential. Um, can we drop the sewer rate to thirty-four, for example, thirty-four, thirty-two? And then see how that plays out over the next seven months, and then we can kind of go from there.
Back to my original calculation, so the single-family unit gets five hundred and sixty-seven cubics, um, for free, and with their base charges. And you're saying here that twenty-two hundred, twenty-eight point six seven. Um, obviously, I'm not doing exact percentages, but on average, would that mean that the condo would get, or the apartment, the condo would get two hundred and eighty-six cubics per unit as well, just like a single-family? Or are they gonna be hit with a flow rate of seven dollars and thirty cents from the get-go? That's a big problem with this, um, this study as well. It doesn't identify that. It says, this gets that amount, and single-family residents only get all of this. Every other category is based on flow base and flow rates. So that's a problem if you get, charge somebody twenty-eight, sixty-seven, and they're still being charged seven dollars and thirty cents flow from the get-go. So I understand what you're saying about cap rates, I like the direction you're going, is bringing it down to cap it off, or possibly look into it as a long-term solution, and encouraging these condo units to also stay within, um, their flow uses, because two hundred and eighty-six, so back to most condos, we have it in one of the reports, they don't use much more than two hundred and fifty, um, at a time. So I, I just wanna verify if we're doing this, that we're not adding flow rates on top of that, because that's what I was told, um, by city manager before, when they went up, our condo went up immensely. He said, you should have been charged flow rates as well. So you should be thankful. Um, so I just wanna clarify what we're doing with that.
Yeah, so the flow rates, uh, for a single-family residential, uh, zero to five hundred, uh, is included. Uh, in a multifamily, uh, their, their rate would be, uh, it would actually go down from what they're paying today in the current study. So mult-, uh, multifamily on the condos, uh, on their flow rate, uh, right now, uh, prior to this rate study, they're paying seven dollars and thirty cents. Uh, with this, they would be paying six dollars and twenty-six cents.
If that's the case, six dollars and twenty-six cents is gonna put them at about, um, I'm gonna, just the, a lot of these that I've seen. So I'm gonna take a hundred unit, that's gonna be about twenty-two hundred dollars approximately that they're gonna have to pay, along with the individual units, that would be twenty-eight point six seven. So that's gonna put us back to that five thousand just for sewer. So either they should get same equity for equity, which is if they're paying twenty-eight point six seven, they should get the two hundred and eighty-six dollars per cubic, like the single-family gets. That's, I mean, that would just make per unit. If we're all going back to per, per unit, and if apartments are at eighteen point six seven, each unit should get a hundred and eighty-six. Anything over that, then they're back to that, even if you wanna take it back to that seven dollars and thirty cent flow rate the way it was before, we messed all this up, I would basically think that would be better, because nobody, we're probably never gonna get that.
Yeah, so that, that would be how it currently is, if we can do anything within a motion. Uh, the, the sewer cap rate seems to be, I mean, issue as councilor Dolan mentioned, and, uh, some of the folks in the public mentioned that as well, uh, where it comes to the, the sewer cap. Uh, but we also have, the other component is, if, if the numbers do come in, in, in excess, or at a higher rate than is forecasted, the next year when we're discussing this, uh, the rates either go down, or stay the same, or we, we don't have to continue to go forward. If there's more money in the system than we're anticipating, then the rates need to go down and not, not impact our, our users. So if, uh, if they did a hundred, uh, so how, homes get five hundred cubic feet, uh, but, uh, most of those houses fell under seven hundred and fifty cubic feet from when we did this last time. Uh, so if the, uh, multifamily, uh, received the, the first hundred, uh, cubic feet, because that's how it's done, uh, including that flow rate on top of that, is that acceptable?
You're going in the right direction with all of this, but, um, again, if we're at eighteen, mind you, this, the condos right now are paying an additional eleven dollars a month in IDD money on top of all of this, which we were never discussed that in this rate study as well. So I, I appreciate that David and Jenny really understood it all. They, they're smarter than I am when it comes to this. But, um, the, I would like to see, I don't want them to be hit with another five thousand dollar sewer rate right now. And does sewer meters get used for actual flow rate? Because that was changed, that they were gonna combine the water usages. And then again, there's a question about the irrigation water. Some of these units here use a lot of irrigation water, and again, that doesn't go- Some of these units here use a lot of irrigation water, and again, that doesn't go down the sewer. So if it was up to me, I think I would go back to my original decision to motion to table this until we can have these discussions now that we've had all this information in front of us.
Thank you. Councilor Dolan?
I think the reason that the sewer cap is a little confusing is because we're lumping multifamily in together. The duplex is just going to, they're not going to have a flow meter, they're just going to see what they bring in and then it's going to go to charge to them. So the sewer cap rate is very important to them and to the individual apartments that have individual meters. So I think the sewer cap rate really needs to come down maybe about thirty-four dollars to protect them. The condos such as Nancy's and some of the other ones where they have the sewer flow rate, it's kind of different because the sewer cap doesn't mean anything to them because they're not being charged, buy apartment doesn't really make sense. They're paying for what's going out. So, you know, in theory, the condos now are going to be paying seven dollars more per unit, but their flow rate went down ways up a dollar. So, I mean, it's still going to be a good deal for them, but I think we need to adjust that sewer cap rate down because I think that's what's going to help the apartments and the duplexes and such.
We are charged with flow rate.
Yeah, so would-
We aren't charged with flow rate, we just charge the base, five-hundred-and-sixty-eight times forty-eight something. We are not charged with flow rate, which we've never used in thirty years. So I don't know what you're going to use. Our flow is not-
It depends on what complex, but we're, the public hearing's closed, I'm sorry. So we just have to have the conversation here. Would you, on the sewer cap, would you guys be willing to gap the apartments and condos at the same as residential, which is fifty-six dollars and fifty-four cents? Then it's acceptable at that point?
I think it's still a little bit lower than that. I mean, we're half of the monthly charge, so I think we're not taking thirty-four, forty, you know, thirty-four, forty, but I do think we need that half.
So if that's the direction that you're ready to go, we can make a motion.
Okay. Let me make this. Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a motion? Motion to adopt Resolution twenty-one dash three-five-four-three, amending and adopting water and wastewater rates and fees retroactively effective for apartments, condos, multifamily, and RV parks and declaring an emergency with the amendment of apartments- apartments at eighteen-sixty-seven, condos eighteen-sixty-seven per unit, multifamily eighteen-sixty-seven per unit, RV nine-thirty-four per unit. And then that apartments are supposed to be twenty-eight sixty-seven. This is, well, I think we can fix it, it's just looking at you.
Just to try to follow, so we got the resolution sheet here.
I don't have it at the computer, I have it on here. I didn't type it, I don't have, because the computer's down, so I don't have a suggested motion.
So the sewer rates, it showed a apartment per unit was at, was going to reduce to twenty-eight sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Your motion includes a decrease from twenty-eight sixty-seven to eighteen-sixty-seven?
Okay, oh, I think I got it. Start over. Make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-one, three-five, forty-three, amending and adopting water and wastewater rates and fees with the following classifications retroactively as of July first, twenty-twenty-one. Apartments at twenty-eight sixty-seven per unit, condos at eighteen-sixty-seven per unit, multifamily at eighteen-sixty-seven per unit, and RV parks at nine-thirty-four per space with cap rates for apartments and condos to thirty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
declare an emergency?
Declare an emergency.
And then the cap rate on the sewer, if I can, Mr. Mayor? Cap rate for the apartments and the condos on the sewer cap, it is, instead of sixty-four, thirty-two, the both have the, the motion reads that it would be-
Thirty-four, thirty-two.
Thirty-four, thirty-two for both of us. And does the motion, if the motion include a future years? We want it back next year, do we?
I don't have the original motion, so I don't think so. I guess we could make adjustments to that next year. Any increase we'd have to make to this next year. Give me a second before we get open up the discussion.
Do it, do it in a second. Right, motion is four, five, a second.
Anyone else like to make a motion?
I would like to motion that we table this water rate study until we get proper information retroing back to July first to the original rate study. Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second to our motion from Councilor Campbell, a second from Councilor Lynn. And for the discussion? Okay.
So, can I hear the motion again?
I made a motion to stop this water rate, a water and sewer rate increase, retroing back to July first until we have further time to discuss everything that we learned this evening and take it back to staff. I think we're very close to what we want to get accomplished, but that's not part of my motion at heart. That's going right into the discussion. I believe we're close, but we're not close enough to make me happy. So my motion is to stop this water and rate study, retro back to July first, refunding every condo their money until we, the council, make the best decision for all of you. We cannot favor it.
Is that a motion?
Yes, all the way there.
I didn't know if that was a motion.
Mayor, council, the results of that would be an increase now to some of the rates that have been established. We haven't provided any notice, that's under the statute. I don't, I don't know. We would have to figure out that service that we want to take, if we're going to challenge, we didn't provide any type of risk, we can't. I don't know that we can adopt a increase definitely by an emergency motion. So, I mean, that would be just initial concerns that we should have.
Take the risk.
Thank you. The comment I have on this is, we came here today to discuss this, we came here today to fix this. I don't care if we're here till three o'clock in the morning, let's fix this right here, right now, not table things, not make all these people come back, let's take care of it right now. And I'd like to comment about that. So, what Councilor Dolan may be proposing may be right, that may be the solution for it, but how do you, like, how do you know? Heck, like, it doesn't take any account to go forward, it doesn't take any account, you know, what the future looks like? Will we, will we run out of money in the CIP budget, will we not? Are there increases after that? Like, there is just so much that we would have to delve into, and I don't think the information is here in front of us. I'm having a hard time following along with what you're saying, just trying to, like, because I don't have the piece of paper, it's right on the computer. So I'm like, okay, like this, I mean, it's just kind of ridiculous.
Are you table?
And I just, I don't know how we can get into all that information tonight. If we are doing it completely, which it feels like we are, I don't know how we can get into that tonight. And I'm concerned that what Councilor Lynn Kim was proposing is even something you could do.
All right, we have a motion to table it and go retroactive to July first, which, and we have a second on that, let's go ahead and vote. Oh, wait, it's active.
Councilmember Michelle Lynn? Councilmember Jim Dolan? Councilmember David Lane?
No.
Councilmember Cameron Moses?
Yes.
Councilmember Nancy Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jenny Coke?
Yes.
Mayor Kasheen?
No.
Motion fails, four to three.
So it sounded like we were close on some of that stuff when the mayor brought that up, and it was the cap. My point is not to have this be for the next five years, I think, like I said, we have to be realistic. HOAs cannot afford to do those increases, we have to be realistic, we can't, this red piece of paper, or red. The fact that we're increasing multifamily by a hundred-and-thirty percent and condos three-hundred-and-seventy-one percent, i- is it fair that they paid what they paid? No. And in the short term, it's not fair, but what's happening to them right now is also not fair. And I do believe it is out of proportion, I mean, we can fix it, and I definitely think we need to relook at it again, David, within the next couple of months. We, I don't think, like you said, we can't do, if we retroact it, we're increasing other people's prices that were already decreased, so we have to get sixty-day notice to do that. So I, the motion was to make a change, to make it work, I think we should maybe have a little bit more discussion and see where some of the council members are on that, and maybe we can, we definitely got to do something, so.
Yeah, Mr. Knutson?
If I may, Mayor and Council, maybe one solution here to propose is, would be to the staff recommendation with the phasing approach, which would provide the relief for the condos, the RV parks, and all that we talked about there, with this coming back before council, before the first phasing increase of that's taken place in September, I believe it's September first of about next year. So that would provide relief today, and then we'd, and then that conversation would occur before the phasing begins. Just an idea to throw out there.
Yeah, thank you. What do my colleagues and council think of that after an action, or does someone have another motion to present?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, please. I move to adopt Resolution number two-one-dash-three-five-four-three, declaring an emergency and amending and adopting water and wastewater rates and fees with the following classifications, retroactive effective as of July first, twenty-twenty-one. Apartments per unit, condos per unit, multifamily per unit, and RV parks per space.
Yeah, no, that's the suggested motion, the staff recommendation.
That is correct, and then we'll bring this back next year, which doesn't need to be in the motion because we can do that anytime we want.
Okay, but still, before discussion, maybe a second, I have a second on that motion.
The motion I made is the motion that was suggested by staff at the very beginning. Mr. Knutson brought up the fact that we can talk about it next year before those other rates go into effect. We can do that at any time we want, so I did make it part of the motion.
Yeah, please, please. We need a second, you have any second? Have a second, sketches.
I do.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
I don't think that will, it'll allow the current, I don't think it'll allow enough, really, no, I just, I don't think it'll be, I think HOAs will still be declaring that they could do before the full year. We're in the comeback.
My only other concern with that is also, we didn't address the sewer cap fees in that motion, so.
So before we take that to, to a vote, I agree, I don't think that's going to be enough to allow these HOAs to go forward, but this is, we're here tonight to do this work, so we have to figure something out that we can all compromise on, on what that's going to look like. So before this vote takes place, do you have any suggestions that we can agree on that will allow this to provide relief for our citizens today?
I go back to doing it the same as single-family home. If I have to vote on something today, it's simple math. If they get five-hundred and some odd, you know, if somebody, somebody can help me with the numbers, whatever it is per square, cubic square, dollar for dollar, so let's just say it was five-hundred. If it's five-hundred for fifty dollars, then a condo should get a hundred-and-eighty cubic for free for eighteen dollars, because they're still paying the IDD on top of everything else until the end of the year. And again, I think we definitely need to look at this within the next year. Nobody has a crystal ball, and what I've seen about projections, they're not accurate. I've seen over and over and over how we're going to go broke and we keep making more and more money. So the bottom line is, if you go with that number of the eighteen-sixty-seven per condo, dollar for dollar, cubics, fair, so five-hundred and six, do you understand what I'm trying to say? If the staff could help me with these numbers, because I don't have a calculator in front of me, that if you take, if you get five-hundred-and-sixty-seven cubic for four-hundred, forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, what is that per cubic? And then take that number, eighteen-sixty-seven, and make it equitable. Because then they're using the same amount, and then after that, if they use more than what the single-family is doing, or the equitable hundred, let's just say for the sake of it, hundred-and-eighty-six cubics, then they're into that higher flow rate of seven dollars and thirty cents. They don't need to get a reduced rate on that, because most of them will be perfectly within their element. The other thing is, the staff's recommendation changed the sewer meters. So if we're going to be here till three o'clock in the morning, let's have these discussions. If these people spent eighteen-thousand dollars for sewer meter to count exactly how much sewer is going into the system, and they have to pay the money to have it calibrated, they got shdarned, they should get that. They spent the money upfront, they asked those citizens to pay that much money. Not only that, is if you want to say base rates, the our condo complex has a six-inch water meter. It went from a hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars to three-hundred dollars. If we wanted to say base rate times base times flow, which is what it said in here, that would be three-hundred times a hundred-and-twenty-seven units, plus flow. So our sewers completely different than our water. Am I making sense on that? Because there's no way we can, there's no way on water, we can charge condos the base rate of three-hundred dollars per water meter times a hundred-and-twenty-seven, or times two-hundred. And according to what this is kind of saying right now, it says, if you're saying base plus flow, that's what it looks like in water. And then over here, so if we're going to do that, so basically we're saying the water rate is three-hundred dollars for the whole condominium complex plus flow, that's where I got messed up with the sewer, because I, like mayor, thought when we went from eleven dollars to forty-eight dollars plus flow, that's what I thought it was. I thought it was equal to water. So again, I don't think anybody in our complexes have too much of a problem with this three-hundred-dollar water meter charge for the whole orbit. Two-hundred depends on what size water meter you have, one-time charge, and they'll pay their water flow, that's what they're doing. The problem is, is obviously they've been hit with this forty-eight dollars per unit and not given any water, any sewer flow. I just want sewer flow credits like the other ones got.
All right. Other, any other comments from council? We have a motion, a second. Possibly before we go there, could we get, well, Dan- Possibly before we go there, could we get, well, Dan, to weigh, weigh in on this conversation? We've had lots of different things go on, multiple motions, so maybe get your perspective to, to offer this clarity.
I would say of all the options they presented, we ran the numbers on the staff recommendation. We haven't obviously had a chance to run the numbers on any of these other options. And I think everybody acknowledges that there's going to be some impact to any one of these options that are picked. I can't say with any certainty or any guess what those impacts are going to be, Pat can't. Because we just, we, we haven't run the numbers. And then you mentioned that the numbers, the budgeted numbers have come in different than what we had projected before. That's obviously not been taken into account in what we're doing right now either. So as far as things go, if you wanted to make that decision now, knowing that there is going to be some uncertainty with it, and it would definitely need to be revisited sooner rather than later, especially because we are dealing with unknowns right now and the analysis hasn't, hasn't been done. I think you're, you're probably within your realm to do that, and you've got some ARPA. Not that I want to use ARPA as a backstop, but it is in certain respects a backstop for you that if things go really south compared to where we were at before, you do have a little bit of a, of a backstop there. But again, this is something that needs to be looked at very, very soon. And not just the decision is made today and then we'll table it until, you know, July of next year because September is when the next, it would need to be done. I, I, I just can't say with any certainty what the financial impacts are going to be. So we can't advise you that, yes, you're going to be okay, or no, you're not going to be okay. I will say that what's being proposed here deviates from cost of service, which is what we were originally tasked to do. Just because you ask for cost of service doesn't mean you have to do cost of service. That's what we were tasked to do in the beginning, so that's what we did. And you're veering away from that now, which as rate consultants, we wouldn't recommend doing. But we understand that there are different circumstances at play and there may be reasons to do that.
I'll just echo what, what Kevin said. I mean, there were a lot of numbers thrown out here. There was a lot of different discussions about the caps, and there's some numbers that are kind of off. And I think that we're going to have to get with staff to get some clarity to what is really in that study and what's there. And so I would agree with Kevin. I think that this needs to be looked at sooner than later. But, so that we don't have the same thing where, you know, you come up to September next year and it becomes another issue. But I think for tonight, what I'm hearing from councils, they want to give some relief immediately. And that's what the motion, the staff recommendation is, that's...
Thank you.
One quick question for you. As I'm looking at your, your water rate study in front of me, and you said revenues requirements versus revenues under existing rates. So in here, you have capital outlay for water of twelve million in two thousand twenty twenty-one, nine million, nine million, eight million, nine million, thirteen million, twenty-five, twenty-six, which comes to about sixty million dollars. And then in sewer, like I said before, when you put these rate studies together, were you taking into consideration the CIP that you have written here and the amount of thirty-four million dollars for sewer and sixty million dollars CIP, which is a total of ninety-four million dollars into your rate study here? And again, that's page twenty-seven of your report on the rate study. Did you put that capital infrastructure into there to be absorbed?
I'm not sure of what page set twenty-seven, because we pulled up the rate study and we could not find page twenty-seven that had those numbers on it that you're referring to.
I think it's page twenty-four, table four twenty-six. I'll leave that as, I'm trying.
Uh, let me see this one. Yes. What? Wait a minute. Wait, wait, I'm looking at the wrong one here. Nope, yep, you're right. How did, I guess I didn't read my own writing. I apologize. So it would be page twenty-four. Uh, table four point six, if you would like to look at that. Can you take a look at that and tell me what that capital CIP was for? Oh, sure, yeah, might as well. Good job.
Yes, so, so that's a capital outline, transfers, and CIP. That's where we were getting confused because we were looking at just the CIP line. So this also includes transfers out to the general fund for the cost allocation of some of those other items, which is why I was getting confused and we weren't coming up with the same numbers. But yes, all of that entire line item was taken into account in, in the analysis that needed to be recovered.
But it's not all capital.
It's not all capital, no.
So one more discussion. I know we, we have a motion out. I'm, I'm a no vote without motion is right now, so maybe that simple math tells us we might have to reconsider it. But I think we may have to put it to a vote so we continue. I guess my question is, I think we need to do something now. I, I do think we need to drill down in this multifamily a little bit different when it comes around again in the next month or two or three months. But, you know, I mean, what Councilmember Campbell was talking about, I mean, we're kind of talking about apples that aren't used a little bit here. Multifamily, if you're talking about a duplex, they have a meter, a water meter that comes in, that lets come out. A duplex is very similar to a two-bedroom, three-bedroom house. It's very similar to a single family home. A condo with a rate flow meter is totally different. So we're talking about the rate flow. I mean, originally, they were paying eleven fifty for a condo. They were paying about eleven fifty with the IDD, which brings them to about twenty-two dollars. And they were paying seven dollars for flow rate on top of that. Right now, what we were talking about was bringing them up to eighteen sixty-seven, so they're going to pay seven dollars more a month. They're still going to have the IDD until the year goes out, but their rate flow did go down a little bit. But like I said, I think it's a band-aid right now that gets us through, it gives relief as needed. And we have time to dig into this multifamily and fix it. But I think we may have to come back. I like the numbers that, that Mayor came up with. I mean, I was in love with those, and it sounded like we didn't have any injections until I brought up the sewer cap rate. But I think the sewer cap rate really is important for the duplexes. Because the duplexes is going to be down to sixty-four dollars, and my house is going to max out at fifty-eight. I mean, that's not fair that they're paying it off more than me. And probably using, you know, I'm using more because I max out at seven dollars and fifty cent, or seven dollar, seven hundred and fifty. So maybe we can put this to a vote, and then if it doesn't, then we can maybe come back, come back to some of these numbers and discuss them. Except right now, I'm going to vote against it, so I would be excited.
I think the voting, does it, will it work here?
One, one more thing on this. Can we come to a conclusion on the sewer rates then? Because according to the staff, they wanted to combine the water rate and pretty much throw out the sewer rate and use that. I'm really against disregarding the sewer rates. I think we really need to use this, whoever has a sewer meter, that has been in place for decades. They put them in for a reason. So in the original water rate study that popped up, it did say whatever your water rate, you know, you're based on sewer rate. But the problem is, is they were charging us the forty-eight dollars, plus they wanted to charge us the sewer rate on top of that, which is too much money. So I just, can we just keep sewer rate flows at sewer rates? If you have a sewer meter, as it's been that way for decades, you get to keep your sewer meter rates, and you're going to calibrate them, you're going to do everything you've been doing for decades. If you don't have a sewer meter, you're going to have to use the water calculation. Can we at least consider that and not throw the sewer meters out the door and just use water flow for the people that have sewer meters? Because that's just going to comp, this is going to mess everything up. Because a lot of people set themselves up a certain way to try and save money.
All right, so we have the staff recommendations motion on the table, enter the discussion before we vote. So I, I'm not in favor of this. I would prefer more relief. But I've been a vote yes, so we have some sort of relief for, for our citizens, so. Ready to vote? See if the technology is going to work for us? Is it now, Paul Wester?
Need more microphone.
Councilmember Michelle Lynn? Councilmember Jim Dylan? Councilmember David Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Cameron Moses? Councilmember Nancy Campbell? Vice Mayor Jenny Cook? Mayor Kao Shee?
Yes.
Motion fails, five to two.
All right, councilor. Can I just say I go back to my original motion with changes, or I have to do this all, whatever you can? I take that as a yes. All right. I move to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-five forty-three, declaring an emergency and amending and adopting water and wastewater rates and fees with the following classifications: retroactively effective as of July first, twenty twenty-one apartments, twenty-eight sixty-seven per unit, condos, eighteen sixty-seven per unit, multifamily, eighteen sixty-seven per unit, and RV parks, nine thirty-four per space, with sewer cap rates for apartments, condos, and multifamily at forty dollars. And if you have a sewer flow meter, it's based on sewer flow. So we have a motion, and, uh, just staff, understand the first?
Uh, clarification, maybe you'll cross the room. You had apartments at twenty-eight sixty-seven or at eighteen sixty-seven?
Apartments are twenty-eight sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? We're waiting discussion. Where was I going with it? Second, motion and a second. Any discussion? It sounds like we need to work on that. If people aren't in favor, maybe we need to make some new numbers when we put them out there. Because it sounds like we want to come to some sort of conclusion, but we're off a little bit, then let's, let's work on it, but... All right, so it'd be, the motion that, as I was saying, we have a motion and a second currently. What the staff recommendation that came before us today was that the condos in multifamily would be at twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. What, uh, my original proposal was, was to go to ten dollars additional. It drops down to eighteen sixty-seven. Apartments would stay at the, the same recommended, twenty-eight sixty-seven. The multifamily would stay, or would drop also ten dollars back to eighteen sixty-seven. And the RV parks would go back to five dollars from the staff recommendation. What that basically did is take the base fee for all category, single family, multifamily, apartments, to about the same increase, about. So it's a multifamily increased about thirteen dollars. The apartments increased four dollars and seventeen cents. The condos increased eight dollars and seventeen cents. The RV parks increased about four dollars and eighty-four cents per spot. That, that seems to be equitable with, with what the conversation was. It seems that it will provide immediate relief to the condo owners and be able to get there. Then we also can address this at a future date. So if that's not, we do have a motion and a second, but if that's not what the goal of the council is, or we get that through, then we need to come up or have some discussion on what, what is, what is due.
Was that forty dollars just an arbitrary number that you?
I was trying to bring it down to some respect from what the housing was, yes.
I was just trying to figure out your, your math there, but okay.
All right, any other questions or comments before we? Yes.
If your cap on sewer is forty dollars and your units are two hundred units, that's eight thousand dollars for sewer if you get to that point. That's still too much.
I am not great in math, and I don't think any of us are. And I'm having a really hard time with all of us shooting up numbers when we have consultants that can't even give us those numbers. I really think that the experts and our staff need to go back, discuss this, come back to the council. Because throwing up these numbers out like this is insane. It's insane. Just, I'll take the number forty, I'll take it. I can't keep that. I would not keep up at all making a motion on something like that. No, that's why we hire consultants. That's why we have staff. That's who should be doing it and presenting that to us.
I agree, so that's it. Oh, we're going to vote.
Well, it's also not just a shot in the dark. I mean, we knew that the apartments were paying twenty-two dollars. The apartment class was paying twenty-two dollars, plus they were paying a sewer rate of seven dollars. And now it went down, so it went down a dollar. So their, their cap rate was already there anyway. It's just to kind of protect it from getting too high while we're... Problem is, we're trying to fix the bills being too high right now. And so lowering the cap rate, if we're off in two months and we didn't collect enough, we can come back and fix this, do a sixty day notice and we can fix it. But the math is there, but the, the, the R condos were paying eleven fifty, and they were getting eleven fifty off in the, or they're paying eleven fifty for the IDD. So they were paying twenty-two dollars equivalent, equivalent. Now we're, so they were paying twenty-two, now they're going to pay eighteen sixty-seven, plus they're still paying the eleven fifty. So I mean, the sewer cap rate is not just a random number I pulled from my head. It is, it is looking at what they're, you know, we know they're going to be paying twenty-eight dollars, but they also don't get the five hundred that we get for the sewer because it is kind of messed up. I think we need to lower it, I would consider it safer than sorry, and lower it to where it's safe and people are going to afford to pay their bills. And in the next couple of months, if we find out it's too low, we can, we can fix it. But I think we need to, we need to come to a conclusion right now and give some relief. I, I don't think we should table it. I think there's too much into it for the city, all the rates. People I've talked to, you know, I, I don't like it, but it, everything's going up. So we can't kick the can down the road anymore. We kicked the can down the road for many, many, many years. We have not had a rate increase in ten years. I think we have to do something, but we have to make this to where they can afford it. And like I said, we can fix this in two months, three months, we can fix it next September if we need to. But I think we need to give them the relief right now, so.
I have sampled bill in front of me. How many units, did you say you had, two hundred and what?
Two hundred and twenty-four.
Two hundred and twenty-four. So at the current, uh, two hundred and twenty-four, let me see what this is dated, okay. They have a water rate, oh, they have sewer flow, so that's the twenty-three. So they're going to be at, because again, I'm with Lynn, this is, this is too much to be doing tonight. But we're at, um, two hundred and thirty-nine times the flow rate. So that would be two hundred and thirty-nine times, I'll ask Siri. Siri, what's two hundred and thirty-nine times seven thirty, because that's what it usually is?
Yeah.
This is discussion. So, so that would be, uh, seventeen, yeah, this is sewer, so it'd be, is that correct? See, seventeen thousand. So again, what I'm getting at is we're, this is just not a good time to be doing this. I really would like to, if we're going to start changing all this tonight with all the information we have, I know we got a motion.
Just for a quick point of clarification, I have written down a part of that motion was if you have a sewer flow meter, your flows are based on the sewer flow meter. So you're doing the math for what's on the chart, but that's not what the motion is.
But they're still going to have to pay the eight, they're going to still have to, aren't they going to still have to pay the eighteen sixty-seven per unit? No, we didn't. No, we didn't. We have the sewer rate, we have eleven dollars flat. So again, all these numbers are all over the place. But, so it's going to be eighteen sixty-seven times two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty, plus their sewer rate. Eighteen twenty-seven times two hundred and thirty. Four thousand two hundred and two dollars plus the flow rates.
And they're paying twenty-two hundred.
So with the motion, we have a motion and a second. If I may, Kevin, do you understand the motion and what Councilmember Campbell's saying and how it actually would, would affect the bills?
Uh, I hear, I hear what she's saying, but sewer flow...
Could you go up to the microphone, please?
Uh, they are being billed at the sewer flow rate within the cap. Uh, they are being billed at the sewer flow rate within the cap, so if their sewer flow meter, the read, is below what that cap would calculate, they will come in at the minimum. If it achieves the high end of that, then they'll meet at that cap, now I don't have the numbers in front of me or the spreadsheets, but the sewer flow meters are being billed that way today, but they are being billed a minimum rate per unit as well, but if the flow rate is below whatever that minimum number should be based on the calculation, it won't exceed that.
It won't exceed the sewer cap.
It will not exceed the sewer cap.
On a cap, that's an eight thousand dollars plus cap. If you think that's fair on a two thousand dollar bill, then, um...
All right, well, thank you for that clarification, we do have, uh, a motion now and a second, um, I guess we probably need to roll call.
Councilmember Michelle Lynn. Councilmember Jim Dolan.
Yes.
Councilmember David Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Cameron Moses.
No.
Councilman, Councilmember Nancy Campbell. Vice Mayor Jenny Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Yes.
Motion carries, four to three.
Thank you. Right, the next item on the agenda is item eight point, uh, eight point seven, award bid for the McCullough Boulevard pavement rehab project to Combs Construction Inc., Mr. Hart.
You guys are running home with us?
Yeah. Tastes a little bit of...
Okay, thank you, uh, honourable mayor and city council, good stock, please. Hi, yes, it's up there, so, uh, tonight, I'm coming to you, uh, to, uh, recommend an award for McCullough Boulevard pavement rehab project to Combs Construction Company, uh, put together a brief presentation here, and go over that there with you, um, I think mine's planned, if you do.
Oh, you're right.
Uh, the project description here is this project consists of a two-and-a-half inch road mill at McCullough Boulevard from its intersection with Smoke Tree Avenue, uh, up to Combs Boulevard, full width, end placement, uh, three inches of compacted asphalt concrete pavement, full width. Uh, as also part of this project, there's two sections where, uh, we need to do additional work prior to the paving, which includes, uh, Pima crossing going, I believe, seventy feet, uh, low and above that crossing full depth, because we had, uh, some, some, a lot of break up there that we need to, to fix, as, as well as that, um, where Mulberry comes in to McCullough, there is a, a crossing with some bollards that, uh, was put in and has done the traffic calming pilot project years and years ago, and it didn't work, uh, so, we'd have to do a lot of repairs to that, as folks did it, run into it, and so we'll have to go ahead and move that, and we'll take forward from there. Uh, the project's schedule is forty-five days, the anticipated completion is December of two thousand twenty-one, so we're gonna jump right on this, uh, project, the construction budget was one million two hundred thousand, the engine investment was a million fifty-five thousand four hundred dollars, we had two bids come in, one from, uh, Combs, uh, two, two companies, Combs Construction Company, they were the parent over there, at seven twenty-eight, seven hundred and sixty, paying the earth movers, being in second, at seven hundred and forty-one thousand, and so you can see there's, uh, uh, equipment there pretty much in terms of the bidding, if you're concerned, if you're wondering what our concerns are in terms of the engine investment being a little bit higher, uh, we were shooting how we could draw on market when we're pleased to be able to get, uh, these two bids, uh, quite reasonable. Uh, like I said, the forty-five kilo days is a lot for completion, uh, with the goal of minimizing, uh, disruptions to businesses, the city will work closely with the contractor to face construction in key areas, uh, assuming the council awards a bid tonight where we didn't get with the contractor, and the contractor's side, we'll be discussing things, uh, like night work, paving half width, so we're not getting closures, uh, at all, uh, in terms of impacting businesses, uh, we're hoping to be able to come in, get this thing done, and get out of the way, and then we can get a nice black street built. Uh, this is a picture here of the Pima crossing, you can see, uh, crack seal does a wonderful job of making the road look black, but we'd rather make it really, really black, but nice in the picture, uh, because this is something that obviously cannot longer be maintained, it's, it's beyond its life cycle, and we're not gonna fix it. Uh, this is a reminder, it's on McCullough Boulevard here, yeah, you can see, it's on McCullough Boulevard from Smoke Tree up to Combs, and it's gonna be, uh, exciting project for us to be able to come in here and fix this room, and maybe a nice new surface ready to have. With that, do you have any questions?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Hart, could you talk about the timeline again?
Yes, uh, there's been, uh, forty-five days, a lot in total, was it more of a, a window we want them to hit? We actually, uh, proceed probably, uh, a couple of days for the road mill portion itself, I would say a couple of days for the, uh, intersection bollard removal, a couple of days for the Pima, and then a couple of days for the actual paving, so you're looking at maybe, uh, ten to fourteen days.
Ten consecutive days, or?
It would be nice to do this consecutive, but I, I, I think they're gonna need to spend some time first at the, uh, Mulberry intersection, removing that concrete, so it won't be doing the, the, the concrete bollards, and then move down to, uh, the, the Pima wash, and tackle that section, uh, for a few days, and, and, and then be able to time in the road mill, that's a contract, and then do the road mill, um, I hope there's not much of a gap there, but, um, there's potential for a gap of this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
May I ask a question, uh, Mr. Hart, how many days, uh, are the, the, the businesses gonna be impacted by street closures without any access to the front of their, their, their buildings, I guess that, that's what we're trying to get at?
Yeah, we anticipate zero, we do not plan on closing, uh, McCullough Boulevard, you know, our goal would be, uh, in terms of the road mill, hopefully that can occur at night, if, if, if not, then it occurs at half lane, you know, half width, you know, Monday and half with the other, to keep the lane open, and then the same with the paving, that's what we anticipate.
We, we do have a, a window in terms of, uh, special events that we need to schedule this within, and making sure that we're not, there's no disruptions there, um, were there any conversations that took place that if, if we ripped the bandaid off, closed the road down from the Smoke Tree to a coma, uh, and to replace the pavement, and we do that all at once, would, would that, would that be quicker, and by how much?
Now, there's, there'd be potential, uh, it'd be a little bit quicker, I don't, I don't know if it would be too much quicker, uh, really, we're gonna have to get with the contractor and talk about, um, their intent on that, but, um, yeah, our goal is not to, uh, to close the road or to impact any businesses, I do think one of the advantages that we have with these particular businesses is that there is common parking in the back, that a lot of folks utilize as well, that, um, uh, but we do want to keep the front, uh, as open as, as possible.
And then also just the outreach to the business community, how will we, uh, handle outreach, so like, you know, timing, schedule, what to expect?
Yes, I'm in the process of scheduling a meeting with a business organization, um, I apologize for moving the name off on my head, but, um...
Downtown Mortgage Association, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Downtown Mortgage Association, so with that, um, obviously with, um, uh, public notices, and we're, we're really gonna be working hard to make sure the communication's open on this, it's a sensitive project, a very important project, we wanna minimize the impacts as much as we can, everyone.
Thank you, all right, any questions in house from council, Councilmember Campbell?
Um, since we're in the business, and my husband and I have had this discussion for over a year now, because we are concerned about McCullough, and how it would be taken care of, first and foremost, when we saw the bid was gonna be in the middle of the night, I just want, um, and, and Combs will figure this out, because they're out talking to us right now, but if you want to expedite the job, a person with a CDL license can only put so many hours on their truck in a day, in the meantime, you have to still be running, um, concrete and, and materials as well, so, uh, the midnight thing for us is what, we were not too happy about getting the bid, but we wanted to make the other contractors honest, that's why we came to the table with it, so what I'm trying to say is, if you could shut down the street, it will expedite the process immensely, and if maybe the process didn't start at midnight, because you're really messing with the CDL drivers, and start earlier, like six in the morning, uh, you can speak with the contractors about it, I'm just throwing that out there, because again, my husb, I had a business on that street for like twenty years, and we knew that street needed to be repaved, and anybody that does streets understands how difficult it is to sit up, um, do half of a road, or the other half of the road, and all the, um, road safety issues and traffic issues of having it one way can be very, very difficult to manage, and as a contractor, I'm just giving you some ideas that you probably already know about.
I really appreciate that, thanks for, for this, good ones.
Um, I'm all for this whole project, I just have a question, like, quite a few years ago, we had talked about, like, the redesigning of McCullough, so that's off the table now, we're not gonna talk about this once we do this, we gotta wanna do this, and then we come back and say we're gonna redesign something, that's off the table, right?
Yeah, I guess, uh... If I may, yeah, I think it was, is it the hard states you're talking about, the crosswalks and the benches and the, yes, this won't impact that at all, and if we still want to do that, we're great, if we don't, great, but it won't impact this at all, so, okay. All right, uh, this is the public hearing, we'd like to address the city council on this matter. Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to Ms. Williams, who has, uh, written comments, we read into the record.
One comment was received on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, I'd like to make a comment on tonight's agenda, item eight point seven, ID two-one dash three zero one seven, I am sorry I cannot be there in person this evening, but I'm out of town, with such a wonderful news to hear that McCullough Boulevard between Smoke Tree and Combs will finally be resurfaced, those of us that conduct events along the main street portion of McCullough are grateful, however, we at the chamber are hopeful the city and your vendor will respect event calendar and schedule around major main street events such as Winterfest, Desert Storm, et cetera, we're all regaining our stride following the restrictions of the pandemic, and to, to have to deal with a major street repair during an event would be devastating for any local organization's fundraising event, submitted by Lisa Rupert.
Thank you, all right, bring it back to council, uh, for discussion, possible motion? Yes, Councilmember Dolan, motion, please.
An award for McCullough Boulevard pavement rehab project, Combs Construction Incorporated, in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses, is there any further discussion? All fair and please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item eight point eight, is award bid for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two crack seal program of Holbrook Asphalt Company, Mr. Prosky. Sorry to keep you off, right, uh, yeah, gee, uh, Mr. Hart has a, a mic, oh, I'm sorry, explain it to us.
Thank you, Mayor, and council, uh, before yours is our annual crack seal program for this year, we've received six bids, uh, Holbrook Asphalt, this is Lois, um, will be treating eight hundred, wow, sorry, one hundred and eighty lane miles this year, um, if you have any questions, I'll be right back.
Thank you, are there any questions to the council, Councilmember Dolan?
Um, I'm on Saratoga, I know we had a big issue last year, they crack sealed that whole section, and then all of a sudden, rain came through, and it literally just ripped up all the crack seal, is there a reason, what, is that a material issue, or I was like, you know, I was seeing manager saying, you know, we start later and we have issues, but is there a way, because as soon as that water came down, it ripped it out, and then if you don't fix it right away, but...
We actually went there, we took samples, we peeled it off, the cracks were too small than they were doing, were doing, so it wasn't getting into the crack, it was just sitting, sitting on top, so when the rain, the rain came, it just lifted it up, and it did, so it was not a material issue, it was the contractor that was doing the cracks, too small, we have an meeting with them tomorrow if this is approved, to discuss all this.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, and just, uh, for the public, uh, the list of the streets, because that's always of interest, um, it's pretty lengthy, as, uh, Mr. Prosky mentioned, that's lots of lane miles, you can get that on, on our agenda packet on the website, and you'll be able to see all of the roads, uh, this is the public hearing, we'd like to address the city council on this matter. Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to award a bid for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two crack seal program of Holbrook Asphalt Company in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars.
All set.
Thank you, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Campbell, and he, excuse me, uh, Moses, um, is there any further, uh, discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote, all fair and please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight point nine, award bid for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two fog seal program to Cholo Pavement Maintenance, Mr. Prosky.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, for our annual fog seal, we've received four bids this year, Cholo Pavement, this is Lois, we've used them numerous times in the past, and they've done a great job for us, um, this year, it's about half of what we did last year, we've been doing about twenty, twenty-two miles of programs this year, and, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions there.
Thank you, are there any questions of Mr. Prosky from members of the council? All right, this is the public hearing, we'd like to address the city council on this matter. Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for possible, uh, discussion or possible motion. Councilmember, Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you, I move to award the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two fog seal program base bid, alternate, alternate bid one and alternate bid two to Cholo Pavement Maintenance, Inc., in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, thirty dollars in worth.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Moses, uh, further discussion, just again, same comment, uh, those to the roads is lengthy, and I'll be available with this agenda item on the website, if you have any interest in that, any further discussion for me and my colleagues in council? Seeing now, we're ready to vote, all fair and please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight point ten, approve the purchase of seven Ford F-250 pickups for parks, wastewater, water facilities and streets for Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, Mr. Prosky.
Again, thank you, Mayor, this is, uh, for seven trucks, pickup, uh, four pickup trucks, all pickups were, uh, I'm sorry, five of the pickup trucks were, were approved in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and two of the trucks were actually carried forward from the twenty, twenty-one, but year, because of the pandemic shutdowns and slowdowns, we couldn't get, get pickups, so they were carried forward to this year, so, two of the seven will be carried forward from that year, um, these are all replacing vehicles, that pharmacy, the replacement criteria that's set forth by the city, 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 um, we have a deadline date by four, November twelfth, to order to these, be, these vehicles, and it's still gonna take up to twenty-four weeks to get, so it's gonna be a long, so, with that, uh, I'm just gonna...
Any questions there? Excellent, yeah, thank you, are there any questions anywhere as a council, Councilmember Lynn?
Are all of the vehicles priced at the same, you know, priced at the twenty-nine thousand?
Uh, I believe there's, uh, four of them are at the twenty-nine, and then the three of them are at the thirty-two, I don't have it exactly, but they, but those are for the four, my fingers.
Thank you.
Any other questions of, uh, Mr. Prosky? All right, this is the public hearing, we'd like to address the city council on this matter. Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for further discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Make a motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the purchase of seven Ford F-250 pickup trucks with Santan...
I move to approve the purchase of seven Ford F-250 pickup trucks with Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and forty-six cents. Utilize the cooperative purchase agreement two four six four.
Thank you, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Coke. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, all fair, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, eight point one one, approve the cooperative purchase of a two thousand twenty-two Ford F-550 utility truck from Don Sanderson Ford Inc., Mr. Brozki.
Okay, this is my last, my last one. Um, thank you, Mayor, this is to approve the purchase of one F-550 flatbed truck as equipped. It's going to have a, uh, sign crane on it. It's basically going to be used for a sign truck. So it would be full anchors and bolts out of ground, it's having a crane to fit each other. And it's also, we're going to use this as another, uh, for other, besides just signs because we're very limited on trucks, so we're trying to make this, uh, a versatile truck that we'd use for, uh, uh, for others. Um, this truck is going to replace, uh, two thousand one, it's twenty-two years old, weighing excess of miles. Lot of work's been done to it, and it is a lot of work, so that's why we give this, let this truck be replaced. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Brozki? Yes, Councilmember Lane?
Can we just tell the public exactly that we're not paying seventy-four thousand? Can you, it's only four numbers there, can you just break the number down? What we're paying for? I mean, I can read money, are you?
Yes.
Okay, the base price is thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven, fifty-two cents, the window tipping, three ninety-eight, and the modified, what do you call that?
Jelly, jelly bet?
Yes, yes, the thirty-two thousand, three hundred and four dollars, which, after tax and all that, that's seventy-four thousand. I just want the public to know that we're not buying a seventy-four thousand.
Yeah, we're not buying, yeah, the crane of all is like six, we've done.
I just wanted to make that.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, this is a public hearing. We aim to like to address the City Council on this matter. Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, bring it back to council for discussion, possible motion? Vice Mayor Coke?
Motion, I move to approve cooperative purchase agreement five zero zero two two zero with Don Sanderson Ford Inc. for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-two Ford F-550 utility truck as equipped in the amount of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty cents and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and authorize city staff to exercise renewal options in accordance with the state's contract.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Coke, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. All fair, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight point one two is approve a cooperative purchase of a Toro Groundmaster four thousand D from Simpson Norton Corporation, distributor for the Toro Company, Mr. Keen.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Yes, we're looking to replace one of our Toro Groundmasters. Uh, this unit is a two thousand four, it's been in the shop six times in the last nine months. Uh, it has four thousand, six hundred and twenty hours on it and the repair maintenance cost of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. So just looking for approval for the replacement.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Lane, and then we'll go to Councilor Dolan?
Can you just tell me what we're doing with all of these old vehicles?
Uh, they go to auction.
I have a question for Pumpkin.
He is.
I'm just getting around to buy some ice cream, Pumpkin. Not a weird way, he was wearing a pumpkin and the thing earlier, it was like eight hours ago, and you want to drop the thing. Oh, but, this is advertising. Um, so it's, for those that don't know what this is, have a picture, it's a big lawn mower. How many of these do we have? Is this, is it served a specific area? Do we truck it around you? I'm just curious.
Yes, we have two of them in our fleet. Uh, they're, they're mainly used for our larger areas of mowing, such as Cypress Park, the ball fields, the rotary, anything that we can get in the bigger space. It has eleven-foot mowing area that it takes in one swipe, uh, and can do that at eight miles an hour. So it speeds up staff time considerably.
Awesome, then. Are there any additional questions, council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion, possible motion? Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve cooperative purchase agreement five zero zero two two one with the Toro Company for the purchase of a Toro Groundmaster four thousand D from Simpson Norton Corporation in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, ninety-six cents. Authorize the city manager to sign the agreement, authorize city staff to exercise the option. Should we review for two additional one-year term?
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. All fair, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, final public hearing, item eight point one three, approve the cooperative purchase of a Bobcat UW-56 from Clark Equipment Company, DBA Bobcat Company, Mr. Keen.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to replace a twenty-fourteen Bobcat UW-56. It's a utility vehicle that we use daily. It picks up trash, it also, with attachments, can be a forklift, it just does just about everything. Uh, it is a twenty-fourteen, it has been in the shop nine times in the last nine months. Uh, so it is, it's seen some visits to the shop. It has four thousand, five hundred and thirty-three hours on it, with maintenance costs reaching twenty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. I'm just looking for approval to purchase a new unit.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Keen? All right, this is a public hearing. We aim to like to address the City Council on this matter. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or motion.
I move to approve the cooperative purchase agreement five zero zero two 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 with Clark Equipment Company, DBA Bobcat Company, for the purchase of a Bobcat UW-56 in the amount of sixty thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven and forty-three cents. Authorize the city manager to sign the agreement, authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew for additional one-year term.
Thank you, we have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from, uh, Vice Mayor Coke. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we are ready to, oh! Mine's, mine's not on at all. We'll, we'll just finish it out. Uh, all fair, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Uh, motion carries. Take it from the beginning. All right, item nine on our agenda is current events. Are there any council committee reports? All right, item ten, our future meetings, our next meeting is Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. It's a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one at six P M, we'll also have a regular meeting. Uh, future discussion items, have any future discussion items? Councilmember Campbell?
Um, I'd like to address, I'd like to motion to, I guess, not motion, it's just, okay. I'd like to discuss, um, clarification on the March, uh, two thousand and eighteen change of agenda items and council direction and how that is to be played out. Just a discussion.
We have a motion, a second, I think that's clear for, for staff of all we want to take a look at. Uh, any other future discussion items? All right, uh, before we adjourn, a big thank you to Steve in the back that had to scurry around to make all this happen, to Jerry Brockmane who came back in from home to make sure that we could do this with all of our technology, uh, issues, Kelly Williams who had to fumble through, um, the other technology issues, and anyone in the back that I didn't know may have come down and helped us. Thank you so much. Thank you for your patience in sitting through this meeting. We are adjourned, be kind, we'll see you next time.